Okay, good evening. I want to call the special end of recess and the special meeting. Call for a special meeting back to order and I take a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Sub move.
Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
All votes show a motion unanimous. We will go ahead and begin tonight's, uh, correct the city commission meeting on February 3rd, 2015 at 6:30. We will, uh, have roll call.
Mayor Jerry Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Mr. Selloff.
Here.
Commissioner B. McRae.
Yes.
Commissioner Mike Price.
Here.
Commissioner Mike McRae.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. The end tonight's meeting with an invitation by Reverend Georgio Heisland.
Heisland.
Heisland, thank you, thank you. Uh, from the Boynton Beach Congressional Church and that will be followed by a pledge of I believe the city's police rights.
God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of our praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing upon this meeting and we ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We ask this through your, through you, God our Father. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll go to agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I believe that, uh, city manager, I believe under, um, under the consent item F, the staff has asked that to be pulled?
To be removed from the agenda.
Removed from the agenda.
For today.
Okay. Is there a motion to do that?
Uh, second. Make a motion, somebody second that.
Anybody second that?
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that, uh, item F has been removed from the agenda.
And I'd like to pull 6C from the consent just for discussion.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? Not? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, show a motion unanimous. Informational items by member city commission. I'll start maybe with, uh, Commissioner Fitzpatrick tonight.
I was afraid you were going to say that. Um, on, uh, January 14th, I went with everybody else here to Galaxy Elementary to, uh, to have a, uh, Governor Scott was there to announce his, uh, educational initiatives when he picked Galaxy because it's such a great school. And then on the 15th, I went to the MPO rolling retreat, which was an all-day affair from, uh, West Palm down to Boca and back. And, um, I also attended the, uh, the, uh, Great Gatsby event on the 17th and on the 18th was, uh, the Dr. Martin Luther King banquet. And also there was a, uh, march in there on the 17th. And, um, later on, I went to, uh, um, uh, training for, uh, mostly for police on implicit bias for that was a all-day affair and, uh, I guess that's enough. Oh, Boynton Veterans', uh, um, four chaplain ceremony Sunday.
Vice Mayor.
Under disclosures, uh, this week I've talked to attorney, uh, Peter Sacks and attorney Marty, uh, Perry. Uh, also attended the, uh, four chaplain's ceremony down at the Veterans Park. Tom Kaiser put on a ceremony for the four chaplains that went down in World War II, gave up their life jackets so others could live. Um, it was good to remember those kind of things. Also, just a point of information here, uh, most of the Boynton residents are going to be getting these 2015 calendars put together by, uh, Eleanor Chrisel up in the city manager's office. It's got, it's a wealth of information on here, budget, departments and all. It'll be a real handy, uh, uh, reference guide in your home, so hang it up right next to the refrigerator. Thank you.
Commissioner McRae?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to disclose, I had, I met with attorney Martin Perry.
Mr. McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time I have no disclosure, but on January the 14th, I did to meet at Galaxy Elementary with our governor, Governor Scott. I attended the Dr. MLK banquet at Ben Benudo. Also attended a American genocide performance at FAU University and I attended that with Commissioner Fitzpatrick. He and his wife was there and it was just awesome. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Okay. I did, uh, also under disclosure, I spoke with Peter Sacks by phone on issue and I met with several of the residents from the Casa Del Mar, uh, project. Talked with them. That's, um, other than that, as far as, uh, before, just towards the last of January there, my, the city manager and I went to Tallahassee. We left on Tuesday, got there Tuesday night, spent all day Wednesday going from, uh, one senator to rep, to representatives. We, we met with about nine of them and talked about our issues here in Boynton. We did discuss sober homes. We talked about, uh, business taxes and we talked about, um, monies that might be available for any special projects we're doing in Boynton. But I think it was a very productive day. We spent all day there running through the capital and were able to fly home that night. So got home around midnight Wednesday. Um, also before I left for that meeting, I did chair the pension board here in the city and, uh, also attended the four chaplain's, uh, event Sunday. It was very great. And also did attend, uh, at the women's club, uh, I think it was Friday, we had the formal, uh, formal luncheon where everybody got all dressed up and that was a fundraiser, I think, for the women's club and had a nice, uh, real nice turnout for that. That's about it. Okay. Um, we'll go to announcements and presentations. At this time, I would like, um, uh, our student athlete Lamar Jackson to join me down at that podium and I believe his mother's here and the principal's here and anybody else he wishes to come down there. Lamar Jackson is a student athlete at, uh, Boynton High School. He's a senior and is the first football player from Boynton Beach to win the Lou Grossa High School Player of the Year Award, capping off an outstanding career. The Lou Grossa Award, Palm Beach County's top honor for high school football players, has been presented annually since 1992. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you our outstanding student athlete Lamar Jackson. The plaque reads, "Outstanding Achievement Award Presented to Lamar Jackson, Boynton Beach's First Player to Receive the Lou Grossa Palm Beach County High School Player of the Year Award 2014." Lamar, you bring great credit on yourself and the city of Boynton Beach. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. Um, I just want to give a special shout out to my teammates at Boynton High because it wasn't for them. If I wouldn't be getting this award, um, it would probably be someone else in Palm Beach County or in Boynton. Uh, thank my mom, principals, and my coach, Coach Wayne. He wasn't able to be here, but thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may add, if anybody's seen this, uh, this gentleman play football, he's unbelievable. Go Tigers. Uh, I'll tell you, you know, he's going to be the next NFL star out of Boynton Beach next to Vince Wolfbach. So, uh, you keep an eye on his career. He's going places, this young man. We appreciate that.
Okay, the next announcement is the first city commission meeting in March will be held on Monday, March 2nd, 2015 due to accommodate the city commissioners who will be attending Palm Beach County Days in Tallahassee. So, the first meeting in March is on a Monday instead of a Tuesday, March 2nd. If you want to mark your calendars. Beginning February 17th, the Denson Pool will be closed so that it can be resurfaced. The pool will remain closed for a maximum of 45 days.
Mr. Mayor?
That's in February.
Right, thank, thank you. Since that pool is, uh, in Boynton and is located in my district, I'm, I have questions about what's going to happen to the lifeguards for those 45 days? What will they be doing? Staff need to tell me?
Yeah, and I did not get a chance to talk to Wally.
Mr. Major. Mr. Wally Major.
Wally.
Wally Majors.
Come here. When we close the pool for the 45 days, the, the lifeguard staff, what do you have them doing?
Wally Major's Recreation and Parks Director. Uh, right now, we're reaching out to the county to see if we can at least maintain practices for our swim team and the lifeguard, some of them do work, uh, in that capacity. Um, one of the tasks that I've assigned to the pool supervisor is to contact our HR department to determine what we can actually ask them to do in this temporary status. A lot of them are part-time, all of them are part-time employees. We don't want to lose them. We, you know, certainly it creates a hardship if they can't work for that extended period of time. I'm hoping that if, if it's possible in terms of any restrictions that might be, uh, inherited within their job classification, if there aren't, we certainly can use them in our after-school program in a wide variety of recreation activities. So, there are a lot of options. I just have to make sure that I can, uh, take advantage of those options. I, that's something that I don't know for sure right now.
And Mr. Major, when you and the city manager get together and get the options set in stone, please let me know. I'm just saying, we don't want to lose them, okay?
Absolutely not.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely not.
Okay, thank you. Next one is an update by Commissioner Fitzpatrick on the Lake Idah property.
All right, um, Lake Idah property. Where the idea for this came from is this 2004 Greenway Bike Master Plan. This is, uh, this is the, the page that talks about it and, um, as you can, all right. Those two, uh, little, uh, bubbles there say potential connection to Lake Idah Park under bridge over canal and potential expansion of Lake Idah Park and/or bike trail through the new development. So that talks about the bridge to, uh, um, Lake Idah Park and that talks about the underpass under I-95. So, people have been thinking about this since 2004. The commissioner of 2004 that approved this was Mayor Jerry Taylor, Bob Ensler, Commissioner Mac McCray, Commissioner Mike Ferguson, Commissioner Carl McCoy. They did three votes on it. The first was to provide $60,000 to, for the civil engineering company URS to perform the study. And what they did is they had charrettes, they went out and talked to, uh, stakeholders and then they wrote the report. The next vote was to accept it as a concept. And then finally, the third vote was to put the Greenway Plan into the City Comprehensive Plan and its policy number 5.2.8. This is the, uh, the in-red is mostly the parcel. The parcel on Papa Maps is actually divided into three. So, you see the red outline with like a hand with a finger pointing up. That's the bulk of it, but it extends down to the, the, uh, L-30 canal to the bottom. So you see there's two other parcels in there. Now, the question is, it's landlocked and if we buy it, one of the questions is how would we ever get to it? And I'm saying, this is, uh, 2007 Proposed Lakeside Trail, which is a 20-house development. And if you can see, if you just slide it over, you can see where it would sit on top of the, uh, 23 acres of the former BE Aerospace. Now, you can see these five or six lots sit behind here. So, the point is, we have something to trade for access. As you can see, access isn't a big deal because the road comes down and it would stop right at the park. So there's access possible. The question is, will they give it to us? And the point is, if they want to put docks on these five or six, they have to get our permission to cross our land for docks. So, seems like a pretty easy trade-off. Now, this, you know, I try to explain to people, nobody, a few people seem to understand exactly what the overall concept is. So I think, uh, ought to look at what's Boca is doing. This is Boca Raton Pond Hawk Natural Area right here. This is of course I-95 Yamato Road, uh, Military Spanish River. So, and this is the old IBM T-Rex building. And right about here is the Tri-Rail Station. So this is closer up, so you see residential development. This is, uh, Boca Library Annex Lake and all around the lake is a walking path. This is the library annex and community center. A way across there in the distance is the residential. And all around the lake is basically a 12-foot wide sidewalk, which is standard width for a Greenway Bike Way because if you got 12 feet, then you can ride a bike going one way and a bike going the other way without them clipping handlebars and knocking each to the ground. So that's why 12 feet is preferable. Now, it's still under construction and you can see under Spanish River Boulevard, they have an underpass going over into the, uh, lake on the other side of Spanish River Boulevard. And so, this is a big comp, trail, uh, complex. This is a pedestrian walking bridge typical of, of these kind of projects. And that's one view and this is the other view. So you see, it's 12 feet wide. And, uh, that's that. Now, this, another thing is the Tri-Rail Station. So you have the Tri-Rail Station here and you have three and a half miles going down here. That line there is El Rio Trail. And up here, you can just see right there, start, that's El Reed Trail going up to the Del Ray Line. Total of, I believe, six miles. This is on the overpass. Here's El Rio Canal. Right there is Yamato. This is the pedestrian bridge to the, to the El Rio Trail. This is the underpass under I-95 for the El Rio Trail. And this is the El Rio Trail, a couple hundred yards down the road on the way to FAU. So this has, uh, you know, been there probably 20 years. Now, Yamato Road, there was a gap. So if you look closer right there, that's two bicyclists trying to get across Yamato Road and it's a pretty dangerous crossing. All right, now, those are the kind of concepts that would be, uh, Boynton adopted in their, uh, Greenway and Bike Way Plan. So talking about the property, there's, uh, I see it as three main phases. The first is mitigation, which is sometime after the purchase, we would start to change over the, uh, kind of, uh, plants that are on there. And what happens is, these are examples of, uh, what DERM, uh, ERM, Public County Enviable Resource Management, they have volunteers and they go out and they clean it up and they replant. And so, a place like four and a half acres could be something that could take like five years because you do a little bit at a time and it's, you know, like three or four times a year. And the cost of the city would be, uh, basically maybe a little startup, $5,000 for shovels and, and soaker hose. And then after that, it's only plant material, say $2,000 a year for five years. Now, this is Johnson Dickinson State Park and I believe this is the kind of, uh, uh, plants, uh, native plants that would be typical in that kind of environment on the four and a half acres. This is Munion Island, which is up, up, uh, in the north of Lake Worth. And you see, there's no road access, but they've redone that over the years by people going on boats. So if we don't have access to a road or through the property to the north, um, I'm sure it could still be replanted. Now, phase two would be actual development. And it would be a, um, the start date is unknown because Mr. Keller owns the property and, uh, he doesn't have, says he doesn't have any immediate plans. So, when it actually starts is when he decides to sell it to a developer or partner with a developer. And at that time, the developer would agree for the access issues like docks and other, um, concessions the city could make to pay for a lot of the improvements. Like, uh, the sidewalk, because they're already got to do with five foot, so all, the cost would be an extra seven feet. They have to do a litorial zone according to the county and the parking lot is also a fairly minor thing. So what I see going on, the site totally would be a parking lot, something like this. This is a rosemary scrub parking lot. And then a kiosk, something like this. This is on Seacrest, uh, scrub area. And a sidewalk, which you saw before, 12 feet. And a kayak landing, something like that. That's what you need, kind of a shallow opening so people can pull up and step out of their canoe. Uh, gazebo someday, there might be weddings there. And a welcome sign. Now, that didn't come out too well. I only photographed it at 3 o'clock today, but that's Boynton Beach's welcome sign. And that, you know, points at I-95. Now, phase three would be the connectivity issues. And the first one would be the bike pad bridge across L-30 canal. And that would be sometime after the end of phase two. During phase one, there would be no public access to the park. There would only be public access once it's safe after, um, the development of the, of the like 20 houses is completed. So, um, the, the cost to city would be nothing for that bridge because the Palm Beach County Metropolitan Planning Organization would pay 100%. Now, the reason they would is, this is a big map. You can see the property up here and right down at the bottom there is Del Ray Tri-Rail Station. So if you can show a route, which is pretty easy, but that's Del Ray's deal, but if there's a, a route to the Tri-Rail Station, then the MPO would regard that as a local project and, um, and pay for the bridge. Now, remember, this is this kind of bridge we're talking about. Now, the other thing which people don't, uh, understand or seem impractical is an underpass under I-95. Well, this is the, uh, I mentioned I wanted an MPO rolling retreat, uh, two weeks ago. Well, this is standing under that same I-95 underpass on the El Rio Trail Canal. You see, this guy's got a big plan. What's he talking about? This is what he's talking about. This is the plan. Here's the Tri-Rail Station. Here's that bridge you saw. Here's the canal. Here's Yamato Road. And you see this line going across here. They're putting an underpass under the, uh, railroad station. They're going to put it under Yamato Road to collect, connect the north and south part of El Rio Trail. It is fully funded by the Florida Department of Transportation and it will be done in 2017. Now, why are they paying for that? Is because they're doing a $66 million project on the Spanish River, um, interchange to bring people to FAU's empty stadium. So, the point is, when, when you have a big FDOT project, they'll put on an extra couple percentage points for, for local options. Now, this is the, how, this is, I got this from FDOT. This is their drawing of, of the underpass. So this blue line here and this blue line here represents different canal heights, water heights. And you can see, when you'd be on it, your feet will be low water level. And this green line represents current, uh, bottom of the canal and they would dig it out and put, I guess, a concrete lining, maybe those like pillows of, pillows of concrete that are all hooked together and, and drape it all along the bottom. So that's underneath the railroad. They have a, uh, screening on top so nothing falls off the railroad, falls on your head. And so that's right there. And then this is the, uh, diagram schematic for under, um, Yamato Road. Same deal, different water heights, your feet are below the water level. And, uh, basic assumption Greenways is that 2% increases property value 2% in a half-mile radius. And a half-mile radius is where you can walk at three miles an hour in 10 minutes. So this is the property there. These, some in Boynton, some not, but in the long run, we're looking at, um, Girl Scout, FPNL, and something here which is currently owned by Bethesda Hospital. So, if you put all this together and becomes like a plan like Boca has, then you're affecting thousands of houses in Boynton, which will help increase, uh, quality of life and increase property values. I think the mayor's house is about there. So, the, the county gave us a, um, a conveyance on how, and it's our vote on it, it's going to be February 17th with, uh, input from, uh, the city manager and city attorney. We made three changes. One, the first one is they said after five years, if we don't have access, then, uh, they have the option to, uh, take it back for $100,000, they, if they wanted. But we're saying, considering all the situation, to change that to 10 years, right there, 10 years. The second thing was, uh, they didn't include a clause, but I talked to all the, uh, several county commissioners and they were concerned about being played for a chump in that maybe the city of Boynton would buy the land and then turn around and sell it for $500,000. So, I said, we'd put in a clause that if we did that, they'd get first refusal for $100,000 and if we sold it, they'd get the profit. And they said, okay, well, in that case, we'll, we'll consider giving it to you for $100,000. And then the third thing was, he, uh, they put in neighborhood park and that brings up saw, all sorts of negative, well, good connotations, but negative in this sense, like tennis courts, basketball courts, playgrounds and stuff like that. And that isn't the intent. So, uh, the recommendation was change it to Greenway Bike Way Natural Area. So that kind of gives a better idea of what we're looking for. So that's, that's my update. Any questions?
I, I don't have questions, but since I'm sitting up here and the report was done 2004, my name did appear. Uh, that was like, uh, almost 11 years ago. I voted like for the study. I don't know if I voted in favor of the study. I voted against the study, but since my name did show up, uh, come February the 17th, I have decisions on how I will be voting again. I'm just saying, you know, I voted for a study, not for the project. So I don't want anybody to go, I say that Commissioner McCray voted for the project. I voted for a study. That wasn't specified. So, February the 17th, I will be voting again. Thank you.
But you also voted to put it in the master plan.
That's what I said, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, moving on then, I have just two other announcements I want to make. Eleanor Chrisel, our communications director, under her own, uh, initiative, made and designed a, a calendar that we did, third, we printed these. Incredible job. It tells you everything, the city, all of the city's activities, what we plan to do in the future, what's coming up and it's, and each thing, all the city meetings of all the committees and, and, uh, and the CRA and the city is all on this calendar by date. And on the back has the phone numbers for every department in the city, for all the commissioners, everybody. It's, uh, it's just an excellent piece of work and we're going to actually, uh, give some of these also to the chamber because it's a great tool for bringing new people in, uh, great, uh, thing for bringing in new business to the community. But, we printed, uh, 35,000 of these and every resident in the city is going to get mailed one of these, we're going to get one of these in the mail. Every, every single resident. Do we have some here tonight? We were going to have some?
I, I mentioned this.
I only think we have.
Did we?
Yes.
Oh, I missed it, I'm sorry.
If you, if you didn't pay attention, pay attention now.
Okay. Yeah. So if you want to pick one up while they last on the way out, but just an excellent job she did on this and it's a, just a tremendous amount of information. So very good.
Thank you.
One other little comment, uh, I'm sorry, I missed your, I must've been doing something else. Um, one other little comment, uh, I did attend the planning and zoning board last week to listen to, see what's going on there and they had the election for their chairman that was due to election, uh, and Mr. David Katz was elected as the chairman of the planning zoning board. So if you need any questions about planning and zoning, he's your man, okay? Thank you. Okay, moving right along. This takes us to, uh, public audience. Anybody in the public that wishes to address the commission on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you give your name and address for the record and try and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you. David Katz, 67, Midwood Lane, Our Fair City. Uh, everybody up there has their nameplate and everybody knows who you are. Uh, and with a great amount of respect and all in good nature, I'd like to present the mayor with an additional nameplate.
Old man river.
Okay, next, next.
Can I speak about that park?
Uh, yeah, we're gonna, it's coming up on the 17th, but if you want to talk about it, you've got three minutes.
I have something really heavy on my, really heavy on my chest.
Go for it.
Thank you. My name is Gary L. Fishman, acting president of the My name is Gary L. Fishman, acting president of the Diane Drive Neighborhood Association and surrounding neighborhoods. I've lived at 3504 Diane Drive, Boynton Beach for 23 years. All of the city members, I speak respectfully for you to help our neighborhood keep out the proposed park. I have spoken to you all over the last three months, two times, about this issue. The two commissioners, Fitzpatrick and Casello, pushing for the park, I respectfully disagree with you both and are supported by hundreds in the pathway of all these connected parks. Commissioner Fitzpatrick has recently been to my home. Just showed up when we met with Francesca Taylor of the MPO Bike Specialist. He was not invited, but came anyways on Friday, January 30th. We were going to focus on the bikeways proposed, but never got a chance to show her the area because he intruded. Commissioner Fitzpatrick, with respect, we feel the park and bikeways don't fit into our peaceful neighborhood. Mr. Fitzpatrick was saying, in front of seven in attendance, the reason why I ran to be commissioner was for this park and greenways plan. Wow, that's the only reason? When told that we were concerned with the bicyclists and vehicles, traffic, crime, loitering, littering, and vagrants in our quiet residential neighborhood as we were in direct pathway to all these parks, he shrugged his shoulders and said, "Well, not clearly caring." His comments in two emails have mentioned me as president of the association in a most negative fashion, yet shows up uninvited to my home. I am offended by his written comments about me and am owed an apology. In closing, while at my house on the 30th of January, Commissioner Fitzpatrick was stating these untrue comments about me, that by not wanting the park, I was poisoning the waters. The crowd in attendance, one after another, said, "You have no comment or no way of saying that. We are speaking on our own. We do not want the park under any circumstance and it has nothing to do with Mr. Fishman. Please, will you vote no on the park?" There are many who are misinformed here tonight in the audience and may eventually speak. You and they must understand the immediate consequences to the neighborhoods and the immediate pathway. Thank you for being respectful and considering our feelings. The green tie on the dais and the green shirts you see do not live in our neighborhood, to my knowledge. They may like parks, but not this one. Commissioner Fitzpatrick met with my neighborhood and has not disclosed this. Is that right? He came to my neighborhood, you all talked about what you did this week. He was at my neighborhood and told no one. And I'm just outraged. I live here and I respect all of you up there, including Commissioner Fitzpatrick and Commissioner Casello. But I just respectfully say, please, no park. Don't shove it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I have a packet of almost 100 signatures, signed affidavits, people who do want that park, just for the record.
I got 134 and I can get 1,000 more. Respectfully, please, everyone. I don't mean to cause problems. All I want is no park.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Lake Calra. I live in Boynton Beach. I understand city is thinking of buying a five-acre lot from the county for a potential park. This potential park has no land access. That lot is bound by water on two sides and identified on the third and fourth by my property. The two city commissioners presented and convinced to the county commissioners on bridges, tunnels, floating docks. The city commissioners did not tell the county there will be a forcible access to that lot. The county feels the city could not build the park and county has put conditions of sale. If the city does not put a park within five years, the county will take back the property and will ask for periodic status and progress on the park. Although the idea of building a park sounds good on paper, it is not practical. Now Commissioner Fitzpatrick has realized bridges, tunnels, floating dock will not fly. And now he's seeking forcible access from my property. And now, which I said no. Yet Commissioner Fitzpatrick has stated, now you are protected by the law. Whenever your property is developed or sold or passed into my hands, he will force the access. I asked him how. He replied, "You have to meet the building codes." He asked me to meet with me privately, face to face. If I give city access to the park, the city will approve board docs and give me additional land from the potential park. I don't think he has discussed with the other city commissioners at all. As you know and heard from Mr. Fishman, the residents are against the park. More than 20 years ago, the county gave to the city eight acres of land free to build a park. This is called Girl Scout Park and is located one mile away from the proposed park. Residents complained because the park attracted teens with loud drinking, sex, car racing, as well as number of break-ins. Ultimately, the city in 1998 closed that park. Now, more than 16 years later, the park still lies vacant instead of earning tax revenues. This park serves as a reminder that it is pointless trying to make a park where people don't want a park. The commission threats are real. The city will hold me hostage for five years and do not allow me to build my adjoining property. The city will be losing revenues on the 22-leg front homes. The county will take back from the law. My question to you is, as a property owner, the previous owner had annexed the property from the county to the city. Will you allow me to reverse the annexation back to the county?
Good. We didn't get your address, sir. Could you give us your address?
3842 South Lake Drive, Boynton Beach. I live in the same neighborhood.
Thank you.
And we don't recognize the green shirts. They don't live in the neighborhood. I feel that way.
Thank you. I just need the address. Next person?
Thank you and good evening. My name is Arlene Malik. I live at 3910 Lake Drive Extension, Boynton Beach, directly across the street from the aerospace plant. I'm opposed to the plan of putting a park to the south of the old Grimes Plant on the west side of Lake Ida. I happen to live there. Presently, there are three of us seniors living on Lake Drive Extension. Because of the vacant land, we presently have problems with kids partying, drinking, racing cars up and down the street. I can't imagine what would happen if the park were put into place. I would be concerned with our safety and security. Each morning as I walk my dog, I pick up trash, beer bottles, papers. The addition of the park, the location and the approach to the park would enable a greater mess, safety concern and my fear of devaluing our property without appropriate policing or maintaining of the surrounding land. That land was scheduled for luxury homes. It is my belief this proposal would be of a negative value to us. I feel the land would appreciate and be far better valued by putting the luxury homes on that land instead of a park. We have plenty of parks at this time and many of them are even unused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Harry Woodworth. Live at 685 Northeast 15th Place in Boynton Beach. The president of INCA, I spoke last month regarding our desire to be more in touch with the commission and some of the activities around the city. Wanted to come back and just highlight a couple of examples of things that have happened that have, in my opinion, of almost 30-year residents, just been outstanding in the last couple of weeks. Last night, there was a meeting at the library where the utilities director spoke and did an outstanding job of communicating to almost all of the residents of Harbor Estates, the drainage project that's going to take place between South and North Road. I've lived here a long time. I've never seen a presentation like that, that was proactive, went through the options, why the one was selected and basically what the benefits of that option being selected were over all the other options. An all-time first. And I mean, I don't know if you get much feedback on your staff, but that was really refreshing. They did a brochure they handed out. Just awesome. The other thing I'd like to thank Commissioner McCray. This morning, he stopped by my house. We met with the officers of INCA. Used the strategic plan of the city to align ourselves with several goals and objectives that we have in common. We believe we have in common. I think this morning we decided we did. And this afternoon, we talked for about an hour with the CRA to line up some of the things so the three of us can work more efficiently on the North Federal Corridor, which frankly needs a bit of work. So thank you very much to the two city departments that worked on all that stuff. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback and input.
Mr. Woodworth, thank you. I met with our utilities director, just like I said, when I left your house at 1 o'clock. And that's why he's holding his head down. I too relate. An outstanding job, you know, thank you. I'm just saying for telling other citizens, a lot of times we don't give staff enough credit for what they do. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Barbalaco. I live at 508 Diane Drive. And I want to encourage all of you to please vote no. When the 17th of this month comes, please vote no for this green park. The presentation was great. However, the reality could be much different for what you presented to us. Whatever Mr. Fishman say, and the lady that lives there, we all feel, you know, we all feel the same way. The Lake Ida neighborhood, it's the place that we've been living there. I've been, I've lived there personally for 27 years. And the reason why we chose this neighborhood is because it's very old, very quiet, and we have our peace there. We feel that like if you do this park, it's going to devastate this area. This is one of the greatest areas in Boynton Beach. It's one of the oldest. We have a lot of gray homes there, old homes. We have a lot of young professionals moving in now. That's where we raise our children. We don't want to see a park next to this wonderful neighborhood. We do have a lot of gray parks, which we enjoy. Why do we need another park? Why were we going to put more money into another park when we have so many other area that we can work? Especially when we claim that we have a tight budget. We have a Boynton Beach Boulevard, then we can use some money there. That can be beautified. Why are we focused so much in a park when we have so many more that we cannot even afford it to maintain it? Why do we want another expense that we're going to pass to the taxpayer for maintenance and everything? So also, if we put those homes there, we'll generate a lack of income for the city, right? The people, then they build those homes, they have to pay real estate tax. So they also open up new jobs. If we put 18 homes there, there are going to be a lot of jobs. You're going to make a lot of money, the city, by, you know, permit and everything else. I really, I'm begging you, please, vote no for this park. You guys did a wonderful jobs in so many different areas. I live in this place for 27 years. We watched this city come up. It's a place that we really enjoy to live here and work. But this park, I don't feel this park, it's a positive thing for Boynton Beach. The people then that here support the park, like Mr. Fishman say, they really don't live there. They don't have all the information that they need. We understand. The park sounds great. Everybody wants to have fun. But at what cost, at what price? We the one who live there. I don't want a bicycle path in front of my home. I've been living there for 27 years. And, you know, we know, I don't want my property to depreciate in value. So please, please, help us, okay?
Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, my name is Jim Chard. I live at 401 Southeast 4th Avenue in Delray Beach. And I'm the chairman of Human Powered Delray. I am speaking tonight to encourage the Boynton Beach City Commission to favorably consider acquiring the Lake Ida parcel, bordering Delray and Boynton. HPD is a local citizens advocacy group. We believe in the following goals. Promote biking and walking as an alternative mode of transportation to our dependence on automobiles. Improve the safety of walking and biking. Enhance the quality of life in Delray Beach through human-powered mobility and leverage human-powered transportation to promote local, sustainable economic development. HPD was formed in August of 2013, partly at the urging of the city commission to encourage citizens in conjunction with their government to advance these goals. We have worked closely with city officials, state and county and government agencies, the Lake Worth Drainage District, the DDA, the CRA, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, the Delray Beach Historical Society and other groups to achieve these goals. And I can say, all of them are supporting our plans. We believe that continued economic development in Delray Beach is dependent upon developing something as an alternative to automobiles and the congestion that they bring. We believe that we can reduce that congestion by depending more on biking and walking and that improved bicycle and pedestrian access to greenways, multimodal transportation hubs like the Tri-Rail in downtown areas will enhance the quality of life in our city. Boynton Beach is currently developing an impressive forward-thinking greenways, blueways and trailways plan that identifies strategies for public land acquisition, land management and recreation. They have been considering these different plans for many years and we look forward to integrating our city's plans with those of Boynton Beach. The Delray Beach Bike Plan envisions, among other things, a greenway stretching all the way from Boca Raton and the El Rio Trail that we heard about earlier to the northern end of Lake Ida and hopefully to Boynton Beach. Mayor Glustine of Delray wrote a letter on November 19th to the mayor and to you commissioners saying essentially the follow, following. "Delray Beach recognizes the importance of bicycle and pedestrian transportation as a key component of our city's economic growth and our quality of life. In that regard, we are enhancing our bike pad, master plan and comprehensive plan to make biking and walking more available, safer and attractive. One major element of our plan is to extend a greenway from the El Rio Trail to Boca Raton, in Boca Raton, to our northern boundary, providing miles of hiking trails and bicycle paths for our citizens in the middle of our communities. We envision our greenway running up to the Grimes Park acquisition you are considering. Such an infrastructure investment will benefit both of our communities."
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack McFadyen. I live in High Point on 250C High Point Court. And I've lived here for over 12 years. I stand here as a member of the Sierra Club and a parent and a grandparent. And I have a real problem with people who are opposed to open space, greenways and a healthier way of life for our generations to follow. I hardly encourage that we talk about the other advantages as spoken by my predecessor from Delray Beach. It seems that they're a little bit forward-thinking in terms of making the connection between the end of their trail and the possibilities of the greenway and natural area. We have plenty of concrete all over southwest, southeast Florida. We don't need a whole lot more. And I have a hard problem with the luxury homes in that area that I just don't see it happening. And I think that the plan laid out by Mr. Fitzpatrick is exemplary and I hope it deserves serious consideration when the vote is taken February 17th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Butch Buoni. I live at 450 Horizons East, number 304 in Sterling. I live at 450 Horizons East, number 304 in Sterling Village. I am a resident of Boynton Beach. I speak in favor of the acquisition of the property at Lake Ida. In a past life, I was a combat helicopter pilot, I'm retired, I retired as a real estate broker, and I also retired as a school bus driver, so I've been many and varied things. And I can tell you, in my experience as a real estate broker, it always improves the community, and it also increases everything for everyone in the community. Many people have a not in my backyard syndrome, I understand that, but I can tell you that I went and talked to a lot of folks in Chapel Hill, and there is a petition out there, as stated previously, but some of the folks who signed that petition were not aware of all the facts, as was stated. I speak in favor of it, I think it's a good idea, I hope you all consider it favorably, and thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Galick. I'm at 3724 Diane Drive. I would be the first house at the entrance to the Greenways Park, if it were going to go in there, if it was going to go across that piece of property in order to get to it. I was listening intently tonight, and I heard some things that kind of bothered me a little bit, and that I'd like to check into. Before you guys vote on February seventeenth, I would like you to make sure that Tri-Rail would pay for that bridge to come across. Otherwise, it'd be a big expense for the city. I would want to guarantee that the bridge will be built before you actually buy it. I think that's a reasonable thing, you guys say that. You also, when we're, it was a beautiful, it was a beautiful renditioning of what a park could be and all that, but then there were some things that really bothered me a little bit. The Girl Scout, connecting the Girl Scouts with it, that area is actually fenced off, that's a park that's there, that's fenced off, there's another one up the road that doesn't get any use at all. They say they connected with the dog, the dog park, and then he had another thing, and there's something here. So, the subject matter needs to be a hundred percent, we need to know what we're doing, we need to know what we're going to pay for if we get that. And I'd like to go unrecorded as saying that I would be against that, because it'd be right at my, right at my, right at my doorstep. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Kay Gates. My, I live at 9693 Eau Claire Ranch Road, Boynton Beach. I've been a resident for fifteen years in this area, and I appreciate your time and consideration, and listening to the pros and cons. My husband and I attended some of the charrettes that were conducted back in 2004, because we support sustainability. As your mission statement did, that I was reading, Boynton Beach, the sustainable community, isn't that what I saw up on the mission statement? Doing greenways and connectivity, where people can hike and bike in safe areas, as opposed to our roads and sidewalks that are right beside the road, is a wonderful thing for a community or a neighborhood. I want to share also, that of the many places that I have hiked and biked on greenways and connected places, I've found that property values increase when you have this type of an amenity in your area. I have biked and hiked in Sonoma, California, on a greenway, I have biked and hiked in Germany and Austria on greenways. They have amazing greenways in Europe. Unfortunately, our communities didn't start out this way and plan for these types of connectivity, so it's been difficult to try to do this after the fact. I'm from Cleveland, Ohio originally, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Emerald Necklace Park System in the greater Cleveland area, and by coming through Cleveland is the Cuyahoga River Tow Path, which connected, formerly connected Cleveland and Akron, and it was part of the canal system, the Erie Canal System. In the last thirty years, and it has taken thirty years, this tow path has been established, and now there's over thirty-five miles of connected tow path that you can bike or hike, not crossing any busy roads from Cleveland, from downtown industrial Cleveland, going through old industrial neighborhoods, going through wealthy sections, and very affluent homes out in the greater suburbs, and out towards Akron and Sagamore Hills, going down to Akron, to the city of Akron, and it actually goes down into where the train station is in Akron. These types of things take a lot of planning, but it can be done if there's a will and there's a way. I want to say one more thing. This, this community has an opportunity to get this property at a hundred thousand dollars, it's a steal. I encourage you to go forward with this type of forward-thinking plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Charles Cantor. I live at 2905 South Greenleaf Circle in Boynton. I moved here ten years ago. When I moved in, I moved into a community called Parkside, and Parkside was, we hope it'll be finished one day, but I'd like to talk now about some past experiences that I've had. We lived twenty-some years in Marathon, and I was on all of the committees that built the Sombrero Park, Marathon Park, but not the New Dog Park, which is really beautiful work of art. One of the things that we did was do marine oriented, you know, attractions. We also initiated the Rails the Trails Program, that we had hoped to have a bike path all the way up to the Dade County border, from Key West to Miami, you could bike. I'm not sure if they finished it or not, but I don't think they have. My point is here, that I was very excited about that piece of ground, because it's waterfront, waterfront, waterfront. They're not making any more of it, it's tremendously valuable, as we all know. So, no matter what happens, one way or another, we ought to own that piece of property. I was going to give my assistance to Commissioner Fitzpatrick about some of the water oriented things, about making bridges and all that, because of the experience I had in Marathon, but after I saw the proposal that he's got up, I'm absolutely overwhelmed. It's beautiful, it's going to attract exactly the kind of people we want here in Marathon, young, I'm sorry, in Boynton, young adventurous people that like something different, they can go under bridges and sneak around through swamps and under railroads, this is a fabulous, fabulous idea. And I really, really want to give every bit of support that I possibly can for you to vote yes on this park. Aside from the fact, it's a steal as far as the price is concerned. I got to compliment Commissioner Fitzpatrick on the incredible job he's done putting this thing together. Vote yes for the park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ray Whitley, and I live at now 5503 Wishis Star Lane, Green Acres, Florida. The reason for my comment is, I am a member of the MLK Committee in Boynton Beach, I am also a member, I mean, the president of Boynton United, a member of Boynton Beach Team of Hope, and a member of Boynton Beach Coalition of Clergy. I am a minister at a church in Boynton Beach called Healing Hands Ministry, and I lived in Boynton Beach for over thirty years. I'm not sure about what going on with the parks, I'm not into the logistics of it, but I do know that we have thirty-two parks already in Boynton Beach, and close to sixty-five acres of proposed land. The reason for my comment tonight is, I drove down Boynton Beach the other day, I'm always proud of Boynton, and I got off on Boynton Beach Boulevard, took I-95 north, and right before Seacrest, on the right-hand side, I saw something that was an eyesore. I wasn't proud of Boynton Beach, that's not what we want to represent us, it's not what we want to represent us. I put myself in the position of a regular person just driving past, and looked over there and said, is this what these people do? So, I'm, what I'm suggesting is, some of the money that we plan to put into this new park, could we just put a wall up? Or do something that would somewhat make the eyesore something that we could be proud of instead of that? So, I'm just putting that, I thought, out there, I'm sure that many of us drove past there, we see it, and if you're proud of it, check yourselves, lack of a better word. Thank you. I really, I think that the Commissioners are doing a great job with making Boynton Beach just an awesome place to live, it's an awesome place to work, and it's just, I'm just proud of Boynton Beach. So, thank you, God bless you all, and have a great night.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Krista Malik. I live at 3910 Lake Drive Extension. I'm third generation, that's my mother, my grandparents was their home, my mother's home, and hopefully, it will be my home also one day. I just wanted to say one thing, I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I know money doesn't buy happiness, it buys everyone a nice big SUV, or whatever kind of car you choose to drive, so you can go around and look for it, but I recently had a life-altering experience. At the age of forty, I discovered I had a birth defect, had to have a pacemaker and defibrillator put in, and that red line goes right through my backyard, and that is my sanctuary. And I just was hoping that I could hold on to that for a little bit longer, so I definitely oppose the park, and I hope that you all can take that into consideration. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Eric Peterson. I live at 3735 South Lake Drive, just very close to where the entrance to this park would be. You know, I wasn't prepared to speak either tonight, really just kind of learning about this, Gary's filled me in a little bit about it. You know, I feel like all my neighbors, I mean, I'm against it, I think, you know, there's a reason that if you go to these parks, they have cleanup crews that work for the city or the parks and recreations that have to go in there, because people don't own that property, they go in, they leave their beer cans and litter, and the taxpayers send crews in there at our expense to clean it up. Why would this be any different? If there's a, if there was a bunch of nice homes, like we saw in the picture in there, those people own that property, they're going to take care of it. That's not the case with parks, you can go down to the public beach, and, you know, after a Saturday, there's all kinds of crap floating around down there. The other thing I noticed too, is I pretty much recognized all the addresses of the people that are against it, and none of the ones that, who are for the park. I don't know where they are, or where they're coming from, different parts of the city, I guess, you know, I would hope that the board, you know, they may come down and use a park once a month, once every few months, you know, the people who live there are going to be affected by your decision every day. And so, I would hope that a little more weight is given to the people who are going to bear the burden of strangers coming and going in their backyard, and leaving litter, and that kind of stuff. Obviously, I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sonny Garcia, 1631 Northwest Third Lane. I talked to Chief Katz a while back about Seventeenth, about they've, they put some signs up, no parking on the grass, and these people are still parking on the grass, there's a couple of signs there that say, no parking on the grass, there's still people parking on the grass, playing basketball, and them courts. They either go through that hole in the fence that hasn't been repaired, or they go around. But these people park on the grass, and my issue is, if the police department is short of hands, police officers, the city should hire two meter maids to go around giving tickets to people that park, that are parked, where they're not supposed to be parked, whether it's on the grass, handicaps, or something. Something has to be done, because I'm sick and tired of these people, I go home every day, and every other day, there's people parked on the grass where they're not supposed to, and there's signs there, and they're not being obeyed. The city's hurting for money, cite these people, give them tickets. We don't have the people, hire two meter maids, just to do that, give tickets where people park, they're not supposed to be parked, whether it's handicaps, or parking on the grass, or anyplace else. Thank you.
Where is this, where they're parking on the grass?
It's on Seventeenth Avenue.
Seventeenth?
Yes, sir, they've been parking there all along, and I've been coming over here and talking to Chief Katz, and...
I'm just trying to make sure I hear the right address, so I know where we're looking here.
It's on Seventeenth Avenue.
Seventeenth Avenue.
So, if the city needs to hire two meter maids, just to give tickets to people that park on grass or handicaps...
Is there a certain block, or where on Seventeenth Avenue?
It's off of Seacrest, Seventeenth Avenue.
Okay, okay, you know what you're talking about, okay, thank you.
Good evening. Hello, my name's Chris Chisule. I live at 3850 South Lake Drive in Boynton Beach. I live on a beautiful street, which is one of a kind, old Florida, very historic area. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with South Lake Drive in Boynton, we should be very proud of it, it's a beautiful place. Anyone that comes from out of town to visit is amazed at what we've got in there, and we all appreciate it, everyone that lives over there. I just wanted to state that I'm opposed to the park. I do believe the traffic and the other issues with the people coming in will create crime issues, you know, other types of things, bringing the wrong element into the neighborhood, not all the people that come to the park, but generally, the more volume of people you bring into a neighborhood, when they see nicer homes, they see an opportunity to rob from them and take advantage of them, and so I'm opposed to park 3850 South Lake Drive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will close the public audience and move on to administrative appointments to be made. We have a couple of appointments tonight. First one is Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, it's my appointment, it's a regular appointment, and I have Jason Hayden has applied for that, and so I would like to make a motion to appoint him.
Second.
Motion is second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, so the motion unanimous. Education Youth Advisory Board, Commissioner Vice Mayor Casello, you have an alternate appointment, and...
Okay, I got two, Wilkinson, I think I'm going to go with Loretta Wilkinson.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the motion is unanimous. I have one, it's a student, and I guess she wants a reappointment, because she's currently on there, Kathleen Wilkinson, I'd like to appoint her.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
So, the motion is unanimous. I believe that's all we have, we have, the other person's not a student, it's a, it's an adult. Recreation and Parks Board, Commissioner Merker.
Yes, Jeffrey, I hope I say his name right, I'm sorry, Fromnick, and I move forward with his name.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, show the motion unanimous. I believe that takes all of them. That takes us to Item Removed Consent Agenda, Proposed Item C, Proposed Resolution 15009, Authorize the City Manager to Sign the Application Documents Associated with Assistance to Firefighters' Grant General Program 2014, Grant Application on Behalf of the City of Boynton Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pulled this from the consent agenda, just to, just for a little information, Chief, as I understand it, we're applying for a grant worth a million dollars.
That's correct.
And it's going to cover thermal imaging cameras and SEVAs, the self-contained breathing apparatus.
That's correct, and for the record, I'm Ray Carter, the fire chief.
We love you. Chief, the question I have is that, I guess, this grant is not guaranteed?
That's correct, it's a competitive grant. There's over twenty thousand fire departments in the country, this is a federal grant, it's open to all fire rescue departments, there's about three hundred and seventy million dollars out there to be piecemealed out to whoever gets, you know, a program approved, but it is a competitive grant, there's no guarantee.
So, it's more like a lottery type?
It's, it's reviewed, the grant application...
Uh, it's, it's reviewed, the grant applications are all reviewed by a panel of peers that work in the fire service. Um, and they rate the grants depending on the rating you get. You may or may not get funded depending on how soon the money runs out. Large cities like Los Angeles, New York, Chicago, Houston, Atlanta, they're gonna get big pieces of the pie because they, you know, require big amounts of money to, to do projects.
If we're not fortunate enough to get this grant, how long before it's mandatory that we change, that we have to upgrade these, uh, breathing apparatus for our firefighters and our thermal imaging camera? Can we continue on for a few more years down the road? And what kind of like, uh, Plan B do we have to-
We do have some service life left in those, those pieces of equipment. Um, again, we were replacing those annually piecemeal until 2008 when obviously the economy turned south and we began to pinch our budget and cut out, uh, one-time expenses like that. Um, we've, we've started to get back into purchasing some of those items, but we've probably got anywhere between, say, two and five years on most of those pieces of equipment before they come towards the end of their service life. We're putting money in our budget now to begin to replace them, you know, again, small bites of the elephant at a time, but at this point, it's still an elephant and we're, we're trying to get, you know, as much of it as we can. We feel like these grant opportunities are best way to really, um, you know, step forward and make up for that lost time where we, we're not funding this.
So we have a Plan B in-
Yes, we do, absolutely.
That was my question.
As a matter of fact, as part of the strategic plan, um, in April, I'll be giving the city manager, um, a replacement plan document similar to our fleet replacement plan that will list all of these pieces of equipment, when their service life will be, you know, terminated and, and how, how much funding we're gonna need over the next several years to replace these equipments if we don't get these kinds of grants.
Thank you, Chief.
But Mayor, if I just may add, just Plan B is, we have to pay for it.
Right.
So it will be substantial funding, um, probably to the tune of at least a quarter of a million dollars over the next, next few years to start trying to replace some of that stuff.
And again, I just wanna point out, you, it's a million dollar grant. We do have a share of that. In other words, there's a, there's a match requirement on our part. We'll be spending about a little less than a hundred thousand dollars to get about a million dollars worth of equipment if we're awarded this grant.
We tried for this grant last year and didn't get it.
That is correct. We did not receive the grant last year, we're not funded.
Uh, my concern is that we don't get the grant and this continues on and then we're on the, on the, on the dime here for a million dollars, you know, how that's gonna affect our budgets.
He said he's put some aside a little at a time, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. Takes us to bids and purchase over a hundred thousand. Uh, proposed resolution R15-016, approve the award of the Forerunner Technologies, Inc. of Huntsville, Alabama, voice over internet protocol telephone system, authorize city manager to sign a five-year lease agreement. Uh, and I'll leave it there without reading the rest. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, McRae.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I met with the city manager, uh, today at our meeting and, uh, this is already funded in our budget, so it's nothing that we're gonna be occurring, it's already their money that's there. Thank you.
And I may add that this is a type of system that, uh, if we are lucky enough to get a new city hall in the future, this is something that we can pick up and take with us, so it'd be money well spent.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Takes us to proposed ordinance number 14-031, our first reading in public hearing, approve abandonment of the portion of North Lake Drive bounded by the south by Demick Road, lot one of Halls subdivision of the north, out to the north. The subject right-of-way to be abandoned is 40 feet wide and extends a distance of 135 feet, containing 5,402 square feet. Uh, applicant is Dodi Buckmaster Glass of Gentile Glass Holloway O'Malley and Associates, Inc., agent for the property owner in K. Hovnenian T&amp;C Homes at Florida. Uh, these next four items are all kinda together. Do I have a motion to remove them from the table?
A motion to remove all of them from the table, A through E.
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Show the motion is unanimous. Um, city attorney, would we like to, CNZs are, all four of these next are all for the same thing that Casa Del Mar, would it be to take all four of them and just listen to the applicant and then listen to the public and then come back to the commission?
Could do that. The first two items, A and B, the, um, abandonment and the request for approval of a land use map amendment are both legislative. Item C, D, and actually E are quasi-judicial. Does the applicant have any objection to consolidating the quasi-judicial, um, and the other two items for discussion?
Uh, for the record, Dodi Glass, we're fine to take them together. We appreciate that that probably would facilitate.
All right, let's start by anybody who intends to testify in the quasi-judicial items, that's item C, D, and E, please raise your right hand, including staff. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about the, given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Uh, if you have special qualifications to testify, if you're an architect, an engineer, or something of that nature, uh, please identify your qualifications to the commission so that they could take that into consideration in weighing your testimony. The documents that are part of the commission agenda package this evening are part of the record of the proceeding. If you have additional documents tonight that need to be identified and made part of the record, please state so and a copy needs to be left with the city clerk who's sitting at the front, please. So once again, will the applicant step forward and be prepared to announce who you are, who you represent? Let me start though by saying with respect to, uh, item A, this is a proposed ordinance. I'm gonna read both ordinances by title at this point and get that out of the way. Ordinance 14031, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, authorizing abandonment of a 40-foot wide right-of-way known as North Lake Drive. More particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer, which shall be recorded with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date. Ordinance 14032, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for a parcel owned by K. Hovnenian T&amp;C Homes of Florida LLC and located at 2632 North Federal Highway, east side of Federal Highway and north of Demick Road, changing the land use designation from low density residential and abandoned, undesigned portion to special high-density residential, providing for conflict severability and an effective date. This is the first of two readings of this ordinance. The next will occur at the next commission meeting unless otherwise tabled to a date certain. Uh, so if you are somebody who wants to speak to these issues, you're gonna have two opportunities to do so.
E and E are also ordinance, did you wanna read those also?
I could do that, thank you. Ordinance 14033, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, regarding the application of Dodi Buckmaster Glass, amending the official zoning map to rezone a parcel of land located at 2632 North Federal Highway, east of Federal Highway and north of Demick Road, as more fully described herein, from single-family residential district and abandoned, undesigned portion of infill plan unit development with the master plan for 80 multifamily units providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Ordinance number 14034, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, regarding the application of Dodi Buckmaster Glass, amending the official zoning map to rezone a parcel of land located at 2632 North Federal Highway, east of Federal Highway and north of Demick Road, as more fully described herein, from infill plan unit development with the master plan for a marina use to infill plan unit development with the master plan for 80 multifamily units, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna let, you're the applicant, correct?
Yes.
We're gonna let you make your presentation and then we'll listen to the other people and then I will give you a chance to address anything you hear of their concerns.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Um, for the record, Dodi Buckmaster Glass. I'm a certified land planner with over 26, seven years' experience here locally in planning. I'm also a lead certified professional with construction and design. With that, I have with me a team, we have representatives from K. Hovnenian, we have our architect Kermit White, we have also with us our marine professionals, we have Dan Simson, our landscape architect, and we have also Marty Perry, who is a member of our team of council. I wanted to start this evening by saying that we've had a lot of discussion and a lot of time. I'm actually excited to be here tonight because this is the first opportunity we've had to address the commission and there has been a lot of conversation and a lot of time spent by both staff and residents in the area and we appreciate that. We think that we've been able to address concerns and make a better project for the city. Everyone's familiar with the site, the subject parcel along Federal Highway, we're just south of the Peninsula Development and just north of Lakeside Gardens. This is our project and for the record, I wanna note that we have eliminated two units on the southern portion of our site adjacent to the single-family home. I'll address it in more detail as we go through it. Um, so obviously there would be some additional changes to the application related to such, including the density, which is now down to 16.24 DU's an acre. Generally speaking, this project is a, a request that has a added parcel to a property that's been known as Casa Del Mar for a number of years. There's been previous approvals on the site. We're currently looking at a property of 78 units that has a infill redevelopment designation through the CRA that provides for the special high-density residential that exists on everything except for the waterfront lots currently. We have height that's within the district, we have units that are below the 20 DU's an acre that are permitted, we exceed the proposed guest parking by a third, that's one of the things that came up through discussions with residents, and we also have open space that exceed the code requirements by 25%, and that's usable open space. As I noted, there's a current approval on the site for a marina facility. That particular facility has multiple buildings, it has a three-story building that is adjacent to the single-family lots that we are including in our parcel at this time, and it has a height waiver for 67 feet for, um, the main storage building, which is along Demick. The previous approval here had a combination of condominium units and residential town homes. This particular project had 82 units and a density of 19.95. As I noted, we're adding property to this site that is not currently a part of the marine complex and it was not a party to the previous residential that was proposed on this site. It's just less than, those two waterfront lots there that we're going through rezoning and land use on are just less than a half an acre. We also have a roadway abandonment. So the land use plan amendment would go to our special high-density residential and the zoning that would be companioned would square off that parcel. You can see that there is currently R1AA that comes to the north into this site. What we're proposing is a request also to abandon this roadway, which is the extension of lake that would come through this project. Originally, this would have been a larger subdivision, there's multiple lots that were designated at one time. This property is contiguous to be north of Demick and the access easement that goes to the intercoastal. The city's policy direction for this area, beginning with the comp plan, encourages infill and redevelopment, which is what we are. In fact, this federal corridor is a part of your CRA plan and there's specific recommendations in that CRA plan, but within your land use element, you specifically make recommendations for encouraging this type of redevelopment and supporting your CRA plan, along with doing land assembly, and it's encouraged through policy 1.7.2. The CRA plan designates this north end of the city as the, um, Area 1, and as a part of that, it has a special high-density category that is associated with that 1A district. As I noted, we're at 78 units that would be townhomes, we have a combination of two and three, or three and four-story townhomes, we also have docks associated with it that would be private docks, along with two visitor's spots. That dock is fixed at the point of the land, then floats and is, um, designed as an amenity to the community. One of the things that came up in discussion was market values. And when you look at the property appraisers' information, generally for the area, you get a range of values for the homes, both in the interior and the waterfront. And obviously, the waterfront lots are premium. Um, this is the market rate values that's there, which would show anything on the waterfront from just under 500,000 to over 822,000 dollars. Interior, there's several vacant lots, there's a number of homes that are identified that are under 200,000 dollars. There are, um, I believe there's one that's just over 400. When you're looking east from the site, this is how you enter into the project. And one of the things that we looked at was transition of this project versus what was previously approved and use that as direction, along with looking at what the values were and the product type. We're looking at product type that would range from about 300,000 dollars for units on the federal side to 800,000 dollars along the waterfront side. As you enter the property, our access into the site is basically positioned between Demick Road and Peninsula's entrance to the north. We have interconnected pedestrian paths, all internal to our site. I point this out, one of the things that, um, we have changed over time is we did have access to Demick through a pedestrian system, which has been removed at the request of the residents. There's an assortment of amenities, but what's kind of interesting about this parcel is that we have an opportunity to incorporate some green principles. Uh, I noted that I'm a lead professional and I often like to stretch the box a little bit, even if it's not something we need to do specific to the site, it's nice to make consideration. Early on, we had meetings with FDOT, there is a outfall for DOT that goes through this site. And what we talked about is trying to tell a story about that. One of the things we were aware of on the marina side is that there are some mangroves and grasses that we need to, um, be responsible for and address, but also, we know that this water from Federal Highway comes through our site to an outfall as well. We talked to DOT, we're actually taking the opportunity to use that as a feature within the center of the project to be a bioswale that has decks and a boardwalk that go from behind the units and then will go from, man, it looks like that's gonna, almost make it right along there, that travels through that site. We also have some art and public places requirements that address both the federal highway side and then what will happen along the waterfront side. Additionally, we have a cabana and pool area and we have open greens that are adjacent to the waterfront. This is a picture, just a rendering of the bioswale with the decks that come out and the boardwalk that go along towards the intercoastal. We have a combination of three and four-story architecture here. The architecture itself, I'll go into in a couple of minutes, but when we talked about height here, one of the things we initially proposed was to go to four stories, um, still staying within the maximum of the 45 feet that's in the, in the development regulations, but what we, in consultation with both staff and the residents, we knocked the height down to three stories along Demick and the homes adjacent to the single-family lot also are three-story on the end, with only four-story units being the north building along the waterfront and the first few units of the second building along the waterfront. When you look at the marina plan, which is, whenever we design a site, we go back and we look at what's approved as, um, some direction, and there was a lot of conversation about height and transition. We believe that what we were proposing was good transition and I'll reiterate that throughout my presentation, but this particular marina plan proposed a 12-foot landscape buffer adjacent to Demick. And then the, if you will, storage building basically is the depth of, or the length of Demick until Lake Drive. To the north was a three-story, um, building that was proposed, that was, had, right here, only has a six-foot minimum landscape buffer between that single-family lot and this particular When we look at the current marina, the transition, this was part of the approved plans that were submitted for the building. This particular picture shows what it looks like on the top for what we're proposing and then below that in the background, you can see where the marina building falls above the units that we're proposing. This is the marina unit, this is the rooftop of our units as we're proposing. We thought that the graduated- We thought that the graduated height was important. Peninsula to the north of us is higher, and our treatment to the neighborhood to the south was always a part of our consideration. As I noted, we have changed things through the process, and we've tweaked it based on comments from staff and the residents. This transition that we have between, and on the bottom there is what we're proposing, note the two buildings on the waterfront are side-facing. We've shifted those. We're now proposing a large landscape buffer of 37 feet there with the loss of the two units, and the building-to-building separation is just over 49 feet. If you looked at that, that's fairly substantial and very different than what that Marina plan currently proposes. Briefly, the architecture is of Mediterranean flavor. There's a lot of detail. There's stone. There's railings. There's all kinds of treatment to provide interest. For the most part, we're dealing with neutral colors, which are the main colors for the building, with earth tones that are the accent points. This is what we call our monotony plan, though truthfully, it's our anti-monotony plan, and the idea is that within the community, not everything will look the same. We'll blend the colors and mix it so that there's a better mix of architectural treatment to make it feel like a broader community. We've had a lot of neighborhood discussion. I know that we have not had a lot of opportunity to talk about it, but we had discussions from the neighbors that started out with the first meeting, where they identified some of their concerns. Our second meeting, which was a follow-up prior to the third meeting we had scheduled with staff, at the second meeting, we were identifying some of the things that we could address and also review with staff, because some of the things that were requested were related to utility plans that the city has, and also the gate access on Demick, which was something that originally, in consultation with staff, was a community-oriented design element that they thought would be a positive. However, the residents prefer it not to be connected. So we've basically had four meetings. Our fourth meeting was at the library just last week, where we reviewed the latest changes. There was a transition of setbacks and the elimination of units. We went through that with them, as well as discussions on drainage, which, drainage came up under the Planning and Zoning Board meeting as a major concern. There had been issues within the neighborhood and to the south. We had an opportunity to talk with staff, and when we met with the residents, we were able to review with utility folks what the upcoming plan was for the area, both in terms of capital improvements and also to redesign the way we were addressing. We looked at Demick as something that we should address. We actually were looking to take drainage into our system, and it was requested by staff to create a separate outfall that would benefit the Lakeside Gardens community along Demick. We also were asked to redesign our water system, which we did, to provide a new water line that would go through Demick, that would connect to the hydrant that now is underserved by a four-inch line, and we would be able to provide an eight-inch line. And that was something that staff said, "Look, you're going to put in new lines. If we do it this way, kind of get a multitasking effect." So all of the conversation that we had has been beneficial, and we appreciate that staff looked at those opportunities to be able to do more with this project. We also looked at the parking, which was something that the residents had expressed a concern about, excuse me, both in terms of not wanting to see anybody park on Demick, which we had a design to address that, but also to increase the number of guest spaces. We've talked about the transition and compatibility, and over time, worked to provide stronger buffers. Though we have substantial landscaping, it's three-tiered, varied height. We had also talked to staff about the fact that the design would include both lower-level materials, mid-story materials, and trees. And along Demick, it was requested by the residents that we bury the power lines for FPNL, and we agreed that we would do that as well. We've got work going on, so it's something that we can accommodate there. Talking about compatibility, I want to spend a few moments talking about that. This application includes the land use and rezoning request to go from the R1AA zoning district. And in this particular case, because there is an older platted subdivision under the R1AA, they would be permitted to have a setback of 7.5 feet. When we started, our setback was about 13 feet. It was 13.37, and we thought that doubling it was substantial. Obviously, we didn't get a lot of agreement on that. And now we're proposing the 37 feet. And I'm showing this. This is aerial of the area, so you can see that the neighborhood to the south of us, these are residential lots along the waterfront. And again, these under the R1AA, because of the subdivision, are permitted to have the seven-and-a-half-foot setback. This is a street view from Google to give you a feel. The house to the far left is the house that abuts the access easement that then abuts our property. Again, we're proposing 78 units here. We have the docks that would be permitted here that are minimal. They're all private. And the overall plan is to provide for an IPUD that encompasses the entire site as addressed, including the two parcels on the waterfront, which is about a 4.8-acre site, including the abandoned portion of Lake. Which also, along Lake, we do have an emergency access, secondary access there that's provided for fire as a requirement, but there is no vehicular or pedestrian access to Demick itself. As I noted, we're proposing parking above code and open space. The current approval, I want to take a moment to talk about the fact that the height and the transition, as of late, there's been some conversation about this being a more compatible use. This approval came in at a time when the residential market was flat, and it was in response to financial concerns that the owner had to try to address basically their requirements. At that time, when this came through, there was controversy and concern about this compatibility. The previous approval also had minimal setbacks and height associated with it. Again, it also had balconies, both at the previous, in this particular residential approval and in the Marina approval, that had balconies that were south-facing. With this existing site, we seem to be going backwards here. Let me see what's going on. Let's skip forward. We seem to be missing some slides. That always makes it fun. There you go. Under the permitted R1AA, this is a diagram that shows what the separation could be with a public access easement, and this is under the R1AA when you look at compatibility. And you can see that there's seven-and-a-half-feet setback. It's just a reflection of what already exists today on the south side of that access easement that would be permitted under R1AA. This is what we originally proposed, which was the 13 feet with the staggered heights in landscaping materials. We also pulled the wall back three additional feet and put a hedge along the access. Then we came back, and we addressed eliminating one of the units on the waterfront and redesigning it to create about 25, almost 26 feet adjacent. And then we came back, and we eliminated the units both on Buildings 6 and 7 on the south side, and we provided a significant buffer there that not only, in our opinion, provides great screening to the house to the south, but it also is far beyond anything else that's been looked at for this site and exceeds many of the code requirements. We appreciate the concerns that everyone has about it, and we believe that we have provided an opportunity to give a significant buffer in this location. And, you know, the difference between 15 feet between houses and here, the distance is 49 feet. I mean, you can picture 15 feet the other side of the clerk and 49 feet going out the door. I mean, it's substantial in terms of what we're proposing. This is that Demick height transition. And again, when you look at where our units are, you can see that we've done an exhibit that shows single-family, two-story house, and look at those sightlines. This is the Marina building. This is our buildings that are proposed there. These, again, one-story and two-story buildings adjacent to us. We have a developer who is local here in Boynton that's been here for over 15 years, developed multiple projects here. They have listened to staff. They've allowed us to work with staff and the residents, and we think that we have addressed concerns and issues that improve both our community and their community. We feel that, from our standpoint, being a good neighbor is valuable to us as well, and we think that we have tried very hard to be a good neighbor here. We meet or exceed code requirements for this project the way it's designed. It's also got the same design standards that other approved projects have here in the city. We're not looking for something different or unusual. Staff found our petitions as originally submitted consistent with both the comp plan and with your land development regulations. We meet the comp plan. We meet the code. We're consistent with CRA policy. We've also consistent with an assortment of policies that you have for redevelopment and infill. We've addressed design concerns, transition concerns, drainage concerns, water concerns, and we believe that we have tried very hard to be a good neighbor here. Again, we have full staff recommendation for all of our petitions. We'd like to answer any questions you have. I understand you're going to do comments first. We'd appreciate the opportunity for rebuttal and also for cross-examination, should it be necessary as we proceed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to hold your questions until we hear from the other?
I'd like to hear from the audience.
Yes, okay. Anybody wants to address this, may do so at this time. Come to either podium.
Good evening. My name is Jason Evans. I'm an attorney, and I'm representing Lakeside Gardens. I want to, again, say good evening to the commissioners, city council, city staff, residents of the city, and the applicant, Kay Havnanian. My name is Jason Evans. I work for Leslie Robert Evans &amp; Associates in Palm Beach. I'm here tonight on behalf of the residents of Lakeside Gardens, a closely knit, single-family neighborhood east of North Federal Highway between Demick and Potter Road. The City Commission asked Kay Havnanian Lakeside Gardens to meet and to reach a compromise, okay? And I'm here to tell you that I attended all these meetings, and we did try to compromise. In fact, Lakeside Gardens has been compromising since 2006. Going back to 2006, there's a big stretch of land, which is the main area, which was designated as the Marine District, which is approximately 4.1 acres. And that is a designation that runs through, I believe, June of 2015. Now, before 2006, that area was designated, single-family homes, fair portion of it. It was also designated multifamily and community commercial. When, in 2006, there was a change to the amendment, Lakeside Gardens compromised. They gave up their single-family homes because they thought that the plan that was proposed and the order that was made was going to benefit their community, their property values. The project was different. It's not, you know, if you're looking to take direction from that project, the current applicant does not propose that project. That project had 42 townhomes, not 78 or 80. It had 40 condominiums, and they were smaller, and they went vertical. There was 27% of the surface area was covered with landscape. Now, I know we heard that, you know, the applicant has hired a LEED-certified, you know, and very, very talented individual and firm, but you can't escape the fact that 27% coverage is not what we have in this proposal. In addition, the 2006 amendment didn't include the two lots that are single-family homes. These do. So the other issue with that, too, is that 2006 proposal, it had amenities that would have substantiated a long-lasting community, not a rental community, a community that would have had a clubhouse, a community that would have had a central fountain, art visible to Federal Highway. That's not what this project has. On October 3, 2007, there was a developmental order to the site plan extending this future plan-use amendment. And again, the residents of Lakeside Gardens worked with the developers, and that was granted. In 2010, Lakeside was again asked to compromise with change in use. They proved that they can work with developers. They loved the Marina project because it was great for the community, something they can use, and they felt would increase their property values. Now, the question of whether it was 60 feet or 45 feet, that wasn't an issue for them because this was a good project. Now, it doesn't make sense, just because something's tall, does that mean taller, does that mean that it's not a good project? Well, they didn't think so. They thought it was a much better project, and that's why they're all here opposing this application. And that's why they didn't oppose the Marina District application, okay? Lakeside's problems with the current application are varied, which is why we are here. And when I say "we," I mean, I'm talking about firefighters, lawyers, doctors, retired people, children. That's who makes up Lakeside Gardens, and all of them have a special opposition to this project, and they're going to tell you all about it. And I appreciate you taking the time to listen to them. Now, the applicant is a well-known and successful builder, okay? They are in the business of building townhomes. They bought approximately 4.1 acres zoned in the Marina District through June 2015. Then they bought two lots that were zoned for single-family homes. They bought those with those designations with no intention of building a Marina and no intention of building a single-family home. They closed on, you know, it's my understanding that they closed on these properties without entitlements, without any contingencies, and that's why they're not in a position to compromise with Lakeside Gardens. They might be able to move something back a few feet. They might be able to work a little bit on a transition with a hedge, but they're not going to be able to stop what they want. What they want is to change the designation that it was, that it was on record when they bought it, and they're not compromising on that. They're not looking at the 2006 land amendment, and they're not looking at 2010. They're not looking at those for direction, because if they did, they wouldn't affect the right-of-way, and they wouldn't ask to rezon those homes. Lakeside does not like this project because it seeks to take away these single-family homes from the area. It seeks to decrease their property values as well as hurting Boynton Beach, the city of Boynton Beach's upward growth. Lakeside does not like this application because everything is built with the minimum code in mind. Let's look at parking. That is an issue that planning and zoning held on to, and that's something that the applicant didn't tell you. It said that the staff is on board, but it didn't tell you that planning and zoning wasn't on board. They voted, in either case, six to one or five to two against this. Applicant went forward. Applicant went forward with minor compromise because they can't. They build townhomes, and they don't care what you say or what you, what your problems are. They are not looking at the residents, and they're not compromising. To add four parking spaces or six parking spaces or whatever it is in increments is not helpful. In addition, the city has a contract with Ballard Partners, and this is a, this is a separate issue that we have, because Lakeside will tell you tonight that a lobbyist from Ballard Partners had participated in the application's efforts. This concerns Lakeside because it is not known whether sensitive information that Ballard Partners or its employees may have had through government, through contracts with the city, if any of that information was private and sensitive and is being used against them because they're opposing this project. These are people that are taxpayers, and they feel as though they might be getting hurt by someone who's compromising information that they wouldn't have gotten if they didn't have this inherent conflict, working for the city in the capacity as a lobbyist. Just a few months ago, we were here making our case to P&amp;Z. We talked about the issues of parking. We talked about the issues of parking. We talked, we had a person talk about how they use the right-of-way. We had people talk about the values. We've got a specialist here who's going to tell you about the values and why this is a major concern for them. At this hearing, I went through the criteria necessary for a comp plan amendment, and Lakeside's concerns were varied, with regard to the demonstration of need, with regard to consistency, compatibility. In this application, there was a staff recommendation that this was not going to hurt the values of the property. We have never seen any data or analysis to substantiate that. We have individuals that will substantiate that. Coupled with the concerns of the proposed plans, coupled with the voices of the residents, planning and zoning voted against the application. The staff was for it, planning and zoning was against it. We were happy that planning and zoning stood up for the residents. They listened. We are here seeking a denial of the application. We look to our town council for protection of our home values, our community, and Boynton Beach's future. Thank you very much. There's just a few procedural things I'd like to note, and that's with regard to the revised site plan. We don't know if it's undergone staff review or if it's undergone planning and zoning review. I just wanted to state that for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Robert L. Moore, and I am a consultant. I am a planning and zoning consultant, and my prior experience was 25 years as director, planning, zoning, and building for the town of Palm Beach. I'm very happy that the proposed project is up there where you can see both. You can see the proposal, and you can see the existing subdivision that came from the 1920s, I believe 1922. The developer bought the property knowing exactly what the permitted use on that property was, and I believe Mr. Perry and others from the developer will address that. I am not an attorney, and I am not here to argue the legal points, but I am here to tell you that they bought something with half the density that is permitted under what they're asking for today. They also have neighbors that have a single-family residential district, and yes, they have worked with us, only after your planning and zoning commission turned them down, and turned them down on a basic reason for compatibility with a single-family residential district, and there is no parking. Now, if you ask for a full explanation of how they're parked, providing the required parking, you will find out there are no garages. They're going to be left outside the vehicles in front of each building, and there is no space for guest parking when they say they...
They're parked on the ground floor.
Parking on the ground floor. My apologies to you on that. But the issues here are the doubling of the density with a neighborhood that's had the existing density that it's, you're looking at, that's been developed, and it is not compatible with the existing neighborhood. And for that reason, we would ask you to ask them to consider a lower density, which would match closer the density that is in the single-family zoning district to the Answer any questions anyone might have. Thank you very much.
And before I introduce Wayne Lewis, who's a state-certified general real estate appraiser, I'd just like to talk about just something procedurally. With regard to the rebuttal that the applicant had asked, I was wondering if we could perhaps get one final rebuttal to that or at least get a time period on which each rebuttal will be?
Somebody has to be last. The applicant has the opportunity to speak last.
Okay, can we get a time period on what that would be?
Not at this point because we don't know how long you're going to take.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Wayne Lewis.
Thank you all. I'm Wayne Lewis. I'm here representing, yes, please, the Dvorsny family. I have a copy of a letter that I've written for you all to consider. As an appraiser, this evening, I'd like to kind of put the hat of the appraiser on you all this evening and have you consider the concept of interchangeability. If you have two like items, if they are exactly the same, they are likely worth the same amount. In the current situation, the Dvorsnys and their next-door neighbor have a very similar home situation. When the Dvorsnys purchased their property, which is, in most people's cases, the largest investment anyone ever makes in their lives, is their residence. They purchased with the anticipation of the city maintaining its existing future land use and zoning that called for single-family residences to their north. They currently have a single-family residence to their south. The house next to them has single-family residents on either side. So now, right now, we have two homes that are very similar to one another. If you are to allow this development to go forward, the Dvorsnys would have seven townhomes immediately adjacent to their property on the north side and a single-family residence on the south. Now, you're tasked with a choice. You get to choose. If, for the same money, you could buy the Dvorsny's house or the house next door, which would you choose? The one with seven townhouses next door or the one next door to them that has a house on either side? If you choose the house next to them, you've just proven that this would damage their value. I leave it up to you to choose which home you would take. One thing I'd like to point out is that by changing the existing zoning from R1AA, you would be increasing the developable density on the property next door to them by 3.44 times. Additionally, the Dvorsnys have a two-story home. Even at three stories, the properties are going to have heights of 38.6, 38.5 feet. They'll be impacted by increased density, significantly increased bulk of the development. If you look at the properties, the photos from the water, there's a rather small manila-colored house next door to them, and these rather large four-story townhouses, and thankfully, and it is much better now, at least a three-story townhouse immediately adjacent to them, but still, that townhouse will be nearly 40 feet in height, where they're in a two-story structure currently. So, again, I ask you to consider which would you choose? And if you would choose the home now to the south of the Dvorsnys, you have proven that they've been harmed.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for letting us talk tonight. My name is Mike McClery. I live at 2600 Lake Drive North. I want to point out one thing on that picture, which we asked them when we had the meeting last week, is to show our whole neighborhood, and we don't need to see the project to the north because there is some symmetry to our neighborhood. And I want to point out that Lake Drive that runs north and south along the west side of the intercoastal there goes south, in the picture that you can't see, and there's houses on the other side of Potter Road, and there's also houses on the other side of Lake Drive, which is part of Lakeside Gardens. I've been in that house for 17 years. I love where I live. I love Boynton Beach. And when I bought that house, I went, wow, what a great neighborhood, old Florida, neat old houses, and there was a trailer park there years ago. We obviously don't want that, so I'm okay with that. What I'm here to talk about is the Marina, although it was going to be tall, I think that it did have some future use possibly if we ever turned the Boynton Beach spillway that people call an inlet into a real inlet one day, because then you would have a use for a big Marina there, and the water would all get cleaned up like sailfish Marina. So I think it did have a future use as a Marina there, and it was probably wise to make that a Marina District when you did that. I would like to probably see that. I'm just going to go on record and say I'd rather have that. But we love where we live. It's old Florida. Very tight-knit group of people here that you see that have been responding to all these meetings. We've been going, listening to what they've had to say. They've made some adjustments. I won't deny that. But one thing I want to make sure you understand that is, if you allow them to take a portion of our development, Lakeside Gardens development, which are the two lots just to the north of Jim and Monica's house, and rezone those out of R1AA to special high-density and give them a road that's there, which is just like the other side of our road at the south end of that street, then I would say to any other resident here that lives in the city of Boynton Beach that your property's not safe. Okay? Because if they're going to rezone this and let a developer take a piece of your property that was zoned residential and make it into a commercial development, then you might as well just, I don't know what good your deed is anymore. I didn't move into that neighborhood to have a development like this next door. I, like what the other gentleman just said a few minutes ago, go back to a smaller project. Make it blend in with the neighborhood better. We don't need 79A, 78 units there. I just was, I actually know the fire chief here, Ray, I'm a long-time firefighter down in Delray, but he wasn't sure. I wondered if there was turning radiuses in there that the fire trucks and apparatus could get around. And knowing also that there is no parking outside, and the two parking spaces in the garage are the actual parking spaces for the unit, the minute somebody comes to visit, there's going to be a car in that street, and the houses are built right to the edge of the street, so I don't even know if we could get a fire truck or a rescue truck by there to get in there. So I don't know. That's something maybe your staff needs to look at with the fire chief and work that The other thing I want to say is, the Marina project that they showed a few minutes ago, they kept comparing that, and there was a couple of slides that they had up there showed, and there was a comparison made by the lady here that it was right next to their houses. Well, that's not true. They weren't using the R1AA lots or the road for the Marina project. Those were left alone. So, what I'd like to see, I'm not against development. I know something's going to go there and something's going to, I want it to be a good project for Boynton Beach. I don't plan on leaving there. I'm, who knows? I'll die in that house. Who knows? I love where I live. But I would like to see them go back to the drawing board, make a better project, a smaller project. Don't take away our property that is zoned in our Lakeside Gardens neighborhood. Don't let them do that, because once you do that, like I said, nobody's property's safe anymore. And let it be a responsible development, and let them build within the scope of the property that they have there that's zoned in that commercial fashion, and let it be a good project for the city. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Robert Gonzalez. I live at 636 Potter Road, which is actually not depicted there. Lakeside actually has a little bit more to the community, a little bit south of that. Just wanted to take a time and, you know, just casually address some of the overarching issues that I see. What originally attracted me to the neighborhood, aside from my family living close by, the Dvorsnys, Monica's my cousin. I live, like I said, at 636 Potter with my wife. We just recently got married last March, and we love the community. We love Boynton. Boynton is a really, really cool town, you know, cool town, and we live in a little cottage. So just kind of painting a picture of who I am, I'm a lawyer by profession, and a couple of things with this project do concern me. You heard from the attorney at first that the first project that was slated for this area was smaller, and I think that it accounted for some of the parking. We've been hearing parking a lot over and over and over again, and, you know, just kind of feel free to interact if you'd like, because I know it gets a little monotonous. But I just kind of wanted to know, how many of us have driveways? If you could just raise your hand. How many?
Excuse me?
I won't, I won't. Okay. Don't participate.
You know your comments are directed to the commission, not to the audience.
Yes, and so, let's just think of this in abstract. How many of us have a driveway that we park our vehicles on? This particular project unfortunately has no room for driveways of parking outside of these units. Everything is to be, all the parking is to be in the garages. And we heard from the applicants that these units are going for $300,000 to $800,000 apiece. I just don't know if that's going to be something that's suitable. So just kind of wanted to put that out there. And then Mike was nice enough to look at this from a perspective from fire. Now, I know that it doesn't necessarily impact, you know, the project per se, but that south road, that road just to the south of the project is a very, very narrow road, and there's a wall very close to that road with a curb that it is very difficult for vehicles to get over. So, thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for critically looking at this project and taking the time. I know this has taken a lot of time through, you know, multiple, multiple meetings, but thank you very much for looking at it closely. And zooming out, let's look at the bigger picture. Let's look at this as a city. Let's look at it as a community, and let's do what's best for the community. Let's do what's best for Boynton Beach. Thank you very much.
James Dvorsny, 2625 Lake Drive North, Alfer City. Good evening, Commissioners, City Council, City Staff, Kay Hav reps, and the citizens of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida. I'm here tonight to update everyone on the Kay Hav Nannian Lakeside Gardens compromise, a concept that was introduced by Commissioner Merker in November. The concept of compromise and sacrifice is not foreign to the citizens of Lakeside Gardens and Casa Del Mar projects of the past. In 2006, the city staff recommended the citizens of Lakeside Gardens sacrifice all of the property on the north side of Demick Road for the purpose of rezoning low-density residential R1AA single-family lots to special high-density residency so that multifamily housing building can be constructed with the benefit to the city of increased tax revenue and the reduction of blight in the CRA corridor. The citizens of Lakeside Gardens compromised with the developers. The developers gained a townhouse condo approval from the neighborhood, and the neighborhood would have access to the many great amenities associated with the townhouse and condos. In 2010, the city staff recommended the citizens of Lakeside Gardens sacrifice peace, quiet, and open space for the approval of Casa Del Mar rezoning from an IPUD with a townhouse use to an IPUD for a Marina use. The city staff claimed that rezoning would be ideal in the city of Boynton Beach's Marina District by having direct economic benefits by further implementing the Economic Development Program. Contribute to the enhancement and diversification of the city's tax base. Respond to community needs or provide services or retail choices not locally available. Create new employment opportunities for the residents with pay at or above average hourly wage. Represent innovative methods, technologies, especially those promoting sustainability. Be complementary to existing uses thus fostering synergy effects and alleviate blight, economic obsolescence of the subject area. The citizens compromised with the Casa Del Mar Marina. The Marina would be approved by the neighborhood, and the citizens of Lakeside Gardens would have access to a tremendous amenity. In 2014, Kay Havnanian purchased land designated for Marina use with no intention of building a Marina. A few months after that, Kay Havnanian purchased land zoned for single-family use in a single-family neighborhood with no intention of building single-family homes. The city staff has supported and recommended a townhouse project that has an incredibly flawed application and equally flawed justification. Planning and zoning advisory board voted five to two in favor of keeping the two single-family lots zone R1AA and no to the abandonment of Lake Drive North. We learned that Kay Havnanian could put 20 unit per acre per minimum code, 10 total extra parking spots, or 10 total parking spots, one handicap for the entire project, which would satisfy minimum code. I know they've made some adjustments. We would have one-way gates so that the townhouse folks would have access to our neighborhood, and there would be a minimal setback as can possibly loosely interpreted per minimum code, all for the maximum benefit of the developer. The commission has asked Lakeside Gardens to compromise. The commission has asked Lakeside Gardens to compromise. This after Lakeside Gardens compromised and lost the properties along the north side of Dimick in 2006. This after Lakeside Gardens compromised in 2010 and lost peace, quiet, and loss of open space so that the city can have a Marina project. This after K-Hub Nanyan purchased the land designated for Marina use with no intention of building a Marina. This after K-Hub Nanyan purchased single-family lots in our neighborhood with no intention of building single-family homes. The history of Lakeside Gardens when it comes to compromise is well documented. The history of Lakeside Gardens compromising has placed Lakeside Gardens in a compromising position. And now we're being asked to compromise again. Would K-Hub Nanyan compromise and develop single-family homes along Dimick Road? Would K-Hub Nanyan compromise and build single-family homes on Lakeside Gardens' single-family zone waterfront lots? Would K-Hub Nanyan compromise and leave our street alone? Would K-Hub Nanyan compromise and build a Marina, maybe townhouse project? Where is the real compromise? Today, city staff recommends the citizens of Lakeside Gardens sacrifice 23% to 30% of the waterfront of their neighborhood and the road that accesses those properties. They are recommending approval of Casa Del Mar rezoning from an IPod with a master plan for Marina use to an IPod with a master plan for townhomes. Development thereby asking our city and our neighborhood to sacrifice the Marina and all of its economic benefits, knowing that, and I reference New Business 6.8.1, Casa Del Mar Land Use, page six, at the end of paragraph H. "The proposed rezoning does therefore represent a loss of a project that could have been a significant asset for the city." The commission has asked that both sides come to a compromise. When we asked K-Hub if they would build a Marina, since they did buy property designated for Marina use, they said they are not in the Marina building business. When we asked K-Hub Nanyan to build single-family homes on the property they bought zoned single-family, they said they are not in the single-family home building business. K-Hub Nanyan is unwilling to compromise anything more than 27 extra feet of setback along the northeast portion of where they want to build three- to four-story homes. That compromise is unacceptable to the citizens of Lakeside Gardens in lieu of all of the compromises Lakeside Gardens has historically endured and the proposed starting point of compromise, which we were led by city staff and others, that the rezoning is a done deal. Vote no to the rezoning of the Marina, back to the townhomes. If any city commissioner is willing to sacrifice the Marina District and everything this Marina project represents, including but not limited to quality real estate development, concepts unique to this industry market such as job growth, increased tax revenue, promotion of like-minded businesses that are synergistic with the Marina industry such as restaurants, marine supply, retail, boat repair shops, other Marinas, more increases in job growth, and greater tax base, access to the Marina District from I-95 via Gateway Boulevard, the proximity to the Boynton Beach inlet, the pressure from the momentum on other municipalities in the county to widen and deepen the inlet, the gateway to the Gulf Stream, access to the intracoastal waterway for the citizens of our city, the domino effect that these improvements would have on the CRA corridor in District Two, including the area west of the railroad tracks in terms of jobs and increased real estate value. I say if any of our city commissioners is willing to sacrifice the Marina District, that the citizens of Boynton Beach need to know why. We ask that if you vote no on the Marina, that you state for the record why you're giving up this opportunity. We ask that your decision be based on fact, backed by data, and not just opinion. If any city commissioners are going to ask a small neighborhood to compromise our way of life and ask us to compromise our real estate value, then we ask you to compromise as well. Perhaps instead of taking that tax dollar today for those townhouse projects, we look down the future a little bit and we compromise. We ask the city of Boynton Beach to ask for more time. We ask the city of Boynton Beach to take time to determine feasibility of the Marina and its economic impact in today's market. We ask that our commissioners challenge the notion of city staff that the Marina project has not been supported by the market. The land was bank-foreclosed and forgotten because of the economy. Today, boat sales are robust, the Gateway Marina and the Palm Beach Yacht Center is at full capacity, and a Marina in close proximity to the Boynton Beach inlet could not possibly fail. The economy's on the upswing, and the Marina would be a much greater asset to our city.
Are you about finished?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you. If the visionary leadership of our city of Boynton see nothing greater than a townhouse project in Casa Del Mar, then the citizens of Lakeside Gardens need greater compromise from the developers. It is no fault of ours that you ask for nothing in return for giving away the future of Boynton Beach. We do not want to give away the future of our neighborhood by losing the remainder of Lakeside Gardens' single-family homes. Vote no to the rezoning of the single-family units that are available there to high density, and vote no on the abandonment of the road. Thank you.
My name is Liliana Dvorsny, I live in 2625 Lake Drive North. I am against losing my dead end. It is a part of my neighborhood, it is where my friends and dogs play. Our parks in Boynton Beach do not allow dogs. This is part of my childhood, and I hope to live here forever. I am also worried about the rezoning of the lots north of, north, rezoning of the lot north of my bedroom. I do not want three and four-story towering stories towering over my house. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Monica Dvorsny, 2625 Lake Drive North, Boynton Beach, Florida. I have put together the work here showing the lines of our neighborhood.
Excuse me, you need to step to the microphone, maybe somebody else could hold those up and point to them for you, so...
I could do this. I'm a mom, I can multitask, so...
Nobody's going to help her?
I got it.
Where's her family? Get the family back up here.
You know, I have one too, it was just bulky. Thank you, okay. So, what K-Hub fails to show in any of their photos is our entire neighborhood, so I took the time to print one up. This is our entire neighborhood, the way it sits. Now, I'm not an attorney, and according to the, it's my understanding that when you want to apply for rezoning, you need to have justification, and there has to, you have to show a need, why you need this rezoned. And according to the same staff notes that my husband had just quoted, it states here that, where am I? So, if this, when it comes to compatibility, they have to take into consideration how this is going to negatively affect the property adjacent to the nearby properties. Now, you just heard from my appraiser, in his opinion, how this is going to negatively affect our neighborhood, especially the value of my home. I'm not quite sure where Doty Glass got the numbers that she showed, but I have an appraisal from 2012, and we all know the market went up. I paid $1.6 million for my house in 2012. I invested in Boynton, I'm all about growth, I'm a business owner here, and I want to see our city grow. I purchased with the intentions of having three or two homes next to me. This is our neighborhood. This is what they're proposing to do, but that's really what our neighborhood looks like. We have two dead ends, and it matches. And her justification, she states the reason she needs to do this is because she has to square off her project. That is self-serving, that only helps them, but it harms us. It's going to devalue our neighborhood, but make their profit margins bigger. They didn't come to us in the beginning like they should have prior to submitting any of this to the city, and they have met with us in the last three, about three times. They have made slight changes, you know, they have offered to move the building from whatever feet, 50 feet from my house. Now, I've stood out there, I measured it this morning, and they're only offering to make the first building north of me three feet, the rest of them are 50 feet. Again, I'm not an architect, but it's my understanding, that's over 50 feet high. And I would invite any of you to come to my house and look exactly what it's going to look like. Also, when they're not showing you... Thank you. That's okay. This is a view of Dimick Road heading east to my house. So, what they're proposing to do is put a wall here, so this wall's going to go from here all the way down to Federal, kind of just closing off this neighborhood and then building all of their three stories buildings around here. One of my biggest concerns is that they don't offer transition between single-family and multifamily. Murano Bay, which is about a mile and a half from our house, I've mentioned this many times, is a two-story townhome development that is in Cunha Cove. Now, when you're driving down Cunha Cove, this is the transition, it looks beautiful. You've got one-story buildings, and this is two-story buildings with great setbacks. And I would like to see something more compatible, something like this driving down Dimick Road. But they don't offer that, what they're offering is three-story towers, which, this is a picture of waterside development, it's kind of small here, but you can see how awkward that looks. And this is a view from as far south as you, as far north as you can go on Lakeside, looking that way. This dead end here, this is part of our neighborhood, and that's what they're asking to take from us. I invested $1.6 million in Blaine, plus bought my businesses here because of this dead end, because of the hopes that I was going to have more future neighbors that, and, you know, sorry, I'm double-talking, I'm extremely nervous, but Doty did try to mention that, you know, the house just south of me is X amount feet nearby, but it's a like house, it's exactly, it's the exact architect, the exact plans, and I'm completely satisfied with that because it's another single-family home. And yes, I would prefer that over three- and four-story buildings. Let me go through my notes and make sure I said everything real quick. And I think that's all. If I think of anything else, I'll come back up. Thank you for your time.
Let me, that's it. The other, could you hold that other, back up, that first one? I want to see it, I can't see it. Not that one, the other one.
The first one.
No, you could show it so everybody can see it. Have him hold it back up there, wherever, everybody'd be able to see it. I can give it to you.
I don't mind.
Thank you. All right, the great, the big, the big...
Come on, Jim.
The big red square is what?
This here.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the proposed Casa Del Mar.
Okay, so, and those are your houses?
My house is right here.
Okay, coming down, why are those, what are those red ones up above?
This, this is, I'm showing you what, this is Lakeside, North Lake Drive, how we have two dead ends.
They're two separate...
Oh, that's a different picture, okay.
It's the same picture, but I'm highlighting what our neighborhood looks like now and what they're proposing, because their justification's stating, they're stating the reason they have to do this.
Okay, coming down from their project there, the big red square, go over to your house there, it's your first one, right? All right, come down, there's about four or five houses on that street there?
Yes.
Okay, right at the end of that street, I believe there are four, there's a four-story building runs the whole length there, is that correct? I was there, yes, there's a four-story building on that end of the road, right?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to point that out, thank you.
Hello again, Mayor, Commissioners. You probably remember me, my name is Suzie Katab, but you can call me Suzie K. I live at 640 Potter Road, which is lots 114 and 115 of Lakeside Gardens. When I moved into my home over 40 years ago, it's funny listening to the people talking about having a park and how their way of life and everything was going to change. Behind me was woods, I had deer as my neighbors. Most of my neighbors have passed. And I just wanted to bring to your attention again that I did complain about a condo going in behind me. In July 14th of 1978, I also presented you with a letter, and I'll give you another copy. My lawyer contacted and spoke with the city manager at that time, and after a lengthy conversation, it was suggested he put my concerns in writing. So I will present that letter again to you, but here's what we addressed. Well, they issued a building permit for a condominium, it was the inlet harbor cup directly behind me, took down my woods. It required an elevation of four feet above the current grade. The new project, Casa Del Mar's elevation, is even greater than that. The property didn't allow for a proper drainage of the surface water that it created. Consequently, the homes on my block of Potter Road suffered erosion of subsurface soil around the foundation dwellings. This resulted in vertical and horizontal damage, which most recently I just spent $2,000 to have a wall replaced because you could see outside from the inside. We have not mentioned if there's going to be pilings drilled or anything, we're not talking about what could be damaging the homes, we're talking about the view, what it's going to look like. I'm here to represent what already did happen. I have no use of my backyard at all, parts of my front yard during the year are, they're all under one foot of water, and this is due to the runoff from the condo behind me that's four foot higher. The city admitted fault claiming that this was the worst mistake they ever made, they haven't corrected anything. I requested several times, and my neighbors at that time, that it be rectified, yet we're still being flooded as evidenced by the pictures I will show you and I had presented on a poster before. The city hasn't addressed these 35-year-old issues, I don't have confidence that you're going to be addressing the current issues. The mosquito control comes out and has to wear boots to monitor and spray the standing water, not inches, but feet. The city is aware of it, so they told me. I'm also subject, and our neighbors are subject, to mold, poor water quality, and other things. I will give you a copy of this 1978 letter again. I will show you my poster, but in it I have these pictures. Thank you. I would like to show you how I lived for 40 years. The reflection of the water, it's piled up. This looks like a river, but this is the west side of my property. My house is in the middle of this. This is when I enter my house this way, you can see the birds, you can see the water. Okay. This river flooding goes right into my front door, and this is my carpet that's damaged all the time with mold. This is also a picture of that, a little bit deeper. And again, I didn't take these pictures during the flooding area to use it for this presentation. I'm just sick and tired of living like this, and I took pictures because I couldn't even believe it. This is the street of Potter Road where the water runs down, this is normally covered when it rains, but you can see down here that whatever drainage they put in did not work, does not work, and that's what causes us to flood. Also, what they're not taking into consideration is, this is on the intercoastal. When it rains, the water table rises, the water has nowhere to go. I don't understand how you're going to be able to drain this off if you haven't been able to do it for 35 years already. This is my backyard, it used to be lovely and green. These are patio stones that I put in there that are underwater, and those are three-inch patio stones. So, I just want to tell you that my concern isn't the beautification, my concern is this kind of living quality with mold and water and the destruction it's going to be doing to our houses.
Please leave that picture if you can, with the clerk.
I left a poster already, I gave you individual pictures, I gave you individual pictures that are in there.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Chisule, I live at 3850 South Lake Drive, I also am the owner of Gateway Marina. Pardon my appearance, I've been very busy going over video film at the Marina. I was going to speak today and going to be dressed a little better, but unfortunately, on Sunday morning at 1:14 a.m., the boats at the dock at the Marina, five of the boats, were, there was theft of the electronics via the peninsula property. This is the fourth incident since the trailer park is gone that we have had access through that neighboring property. We have over 20 cameras at Gateway Marina now, so there's video evidence of the access points that the people are using, as well as the cooperation with the peninsula's cameras. They are coming in through these people's property now. They picked up that additional single-family lot there. They picked up that additional single-family lot there. The only fencing on the entire property is nearly, I believe, a decade old, I think 2006. And of course, in that amount of time, the fencing needs to be updated for security reasons. The property that, where the single-family zoning is, has no fence whatsoever, and the trespass sign is illegible. All the "no trespassing" words are off it. What happens is, everyone is using that property as a party spot. And on Sunday morning, after the incident, when we arrived at the marina, I started to play detective, and I walked down through the Peninsula's parking lot, of course, with their permission, walked through, over their fence. The elevations to their property is literally, they have a gate from the peninsula, and you literally step down maybe a foot and a half. And the Peninsula's fence, I believe, is 36 inches high. And that is all the protection that the peninsula has from this property. And so as I walked down to that beached area, I noticed an area with Adirondack chairs, plastic, not big money, a piece of driftwood assembled as a bench, a fire pit, and a garbage can with a plastic bag in it. So they're considering littering for the partiers, I guess. They don't want to litter, which is a good thing, but they shouldn't be back there. It is creating a problem with the access. So I'm concerned about today's problem with my marina being vulnerable from thieves going into that vacant land without it being secured. And I was going to bring up this issue, but it just is ironic that I got hit on, you know, Sunday morning, and it is a present, real problem that we're having today. After I went there Sunday, I went there again today, and someone has gone to that same site where the Adirondack chairs are and brought pallets to the bonfire area and have stacked up pallets just since Sunday in preparation, I presume, of a future bonfire that takes place on their property now. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, but I would like the support of everyone here to try to secure that area, to eliminate the access, because they're not coming in my way, they're coming in from this vacant property right now. And it's a real, present problem. And I wasn't going to talk about present as much, I mean, as much because it hadn't happened in years, but I was concerned about the future because I had been hit three times because the elevations on the waterfront, on the north end of this proposed site, is literally one step up and hop over a 36-inch fence. So I'm curious to find out what type of fence is going to go there, what the height of that fence may be, where is the location of the fence? Is there barbed wire on top? What is going on on that end? Because I keep getting hit there, and there's video evidence to prove it. I'm sure they're not aware of this because it just happened Sunday, but I would like the support of everyone here to try to act upon this quickly because they're going to come back. You know, it was too easy. It was 15 minutes. They stole in excess of $50,000 of electronics on five boats, and they were dressed in hoodies, gloves, bandana masks. They knew where all my cameras were. They were ducking behind the gas dispenser. They've been to my property, so I've been doing the exhaustive research, that's why I'm like this right now, of going through hours and hours of videotape over the last 44 days, trying to see when they staked me out. Because what happens is, those people go over there, and then they walk around the Peninsula's seawall, and then they come to my property and go fishing. And we have posted signs, and we constantly run them off. Thursday and Friday night, we ran off two fishermen that fit the description of the men that were at our place. And the description is very vague because they had masks. We had one white male and one gentleman with dreadlocks. So that's really all we had there as far as the description, but that is the similar type of person that was fishing on our dock at 5:30 at night that we did run off. So I would like the support and maybe start communicating, maybe we can work this out and secure that parcel because there is zero fencing there. We can update maybe the nine-year-old fence that's there and protect not only other Boynton residents in the peninsula, but a well, you know, a community staple, Gateway Marina, working-class marina, not a yacht club. And we need help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. The woman who spoke before this gentleman, who is she? Good, you're the one. I'd like to comment on what you said. I totally agree with you.
Commissioner?
Oh, I can't, I'm out of order?
Could you allow the people who want to testify?
Okay, okay. All right, because I want to...
And address any questions you have to the people at the microphone.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm good.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Please help. Because they'll be back, you know? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Buhler at 2623 Lake Drive North. Good folder. Felt like I was in high school again. So I wanted to start off by saying thank you. I know it's late and y'all want to go home, so thank you for listening to us. And I also wanted to say, in quote, and you'll see on the first page there, there are some quotes that are from the Code of Ordinances and city information that I think is really valuable and has precedence in what's going on here today. One of the quotes is that each IPod project is independent and will be evaluated solely on its own merits. The inclusion of certain features in a previously approved IPod project will not automatically be entertained as a valid argument for the inclusion of that same feature in any other IPod project. The reason I want to talk about this is, IPod is an infill development plan. It doesn't have to be special high-density, regardless of 2006 or 2009 was. We're in a different era right now. We all know 2006 was a massive boom. Special high-density might have made sense. But 2014 now, it's nine years later, the market has shifted. And you can see I provided some market data. U.S. Census shows that single-family home purchases have actually increased while there's a decrease in multifamily units, especially in the southeast region. You'll also see specifically for Florida, the Florida Realtors Economist actually shows, and this is data from 2013 and 2014, so more relevant than the data that's in the presented K-HOPLAN. From 2013 to 2014 has seen a decrease in 2.1%, 1.2%. And what's even more critical is that there's a decrease of 7.2% on pending sales. So the demand is not there. However, there is an 8% increase in single-family residences. And for us to ignore that and just give the three single-family homes that we have there to this project to become something that might become vacant, and I hate to say it, but Peninsula that's north of this project has a high vacancy rate. They have only filled 20 of the units that they have. They currently have 72, and only 20 have actually been filled. And that's kind of nervous in a way because are we going to have the same problem? Is it going to turn into rentals again? And is it going to not sell and it's going to become a vacant lot? The other issue that I wanted to mention is that it's also known that homes, single-family homes appreciate value more than a multifamily unit does. And one of the reasons that does is just because the units get dated, and you can't update them, you can't fix them, you can't change them. And when that happens, you actually depreciate the value of the homes around it, and it depreciates the value of the city. And we see that in many areas in Boynton Beach that right now we're facing. We have 40 multi-unit family homes along Federal that we cannot update or change because of all the stakeholders involved. So now we want to present a project that's going to include 78 stakeholders that 10 years from now, we won't be able to update. And this is, this is a gem of a property. This is the last piece of property that has intercoastal waterfront for our city. And it can be, I mean, I've crunched numbers with my better half here, and he may not want to talk about his prestige, but he went to London Business School for his MBA, which is second only to Harvard. And with those numbers, sorry, I'm nervous. I feel like I'm in high school again. So with those numbers, you can actually get single-family residences in those homes in that area that would actually bring as much tax revenue to the city as this project would and would actually be as profitable to K-HOPL. And I've included some of, a picture of, in the last page here that you'll see, of a development one mile to our north called Hypoluxo Point. And they have done this. They put a finger canal in, and yes, you can put a finger canal in. I have called Florida Department, I have called the U.S. Army Corps, I did tons of homework, and I spoke to everybody. You can get permits approved in three months. But the reason I'm bringing this up is, we have the opportunity to make million-dollar homes versus just townhomes that'll be dated in 10 years. And the longevity of that for this city, I feel, would be a better project. And I know it's kind of, we go from one thing to another, but I think it's something that we just need to look at when we're looking at compromising. What could have gone here and what is going here, we should compromise a bit more. You'll also notice that in here, I have, actually from our Code of Ordinances, the setbacks. And my other concern is if Casa Del Mar comes, welcome, but along Dimick, their setback that they have proposed is of 19 feet. And that's actually what you see on the fourth page or fifth page, is an 18-foot setback. According to residential zoning, the setback should be at least 20 feet, and it's not, it's 18. And that's if you're going with residential one. This is a residential three property, which actually should have a setback that would be much greater of about 40 feet. And I know that one of the reasons why this is, is because it says right here, if you look underneath it, where it says that the IPod is flexible. An IPod is flexible, but if you go and you read the fine print, it tells you that an IPod is flexible unless it is adjacent to a residential community. Minimum required perimeter setbacks of an IPod are flexible except where adjacent to single-family residential zoning. Where adjacent to single-family residential zoning, required perimeter setbacks shall resemble the setbacks of adjacent development. So fine, they did the 20 feet, right? They actually did 18, but we'll give them the 20. However, it says the perimeter building should have an increased setback of one additional foot of every building height and access of 30 feet. Those along Dimick are 38, 39 feet high, so they should have an additional setback of eight to nine feet. My other concern is, for new buildings, right-of-way is 50 feet. We're using the old right-of-way of 40 feet. When and if the city comes and updates the width of our street, because we have a small street, they won't be able to do that because there'll be a wall there. So it's hindering the progress and evolution of our neighborhood. So these were some of my concerns. And I did want to say that, one of the other quotes I think is quite important to this, is that the city is not obligated to automatically approve the level of development intensity requested for the IPod. Instead, it is expected to approve only such level of intensity that is appropriate for a particular location. The city may require, as a condition of approval, any limitation, condition, or design factor that provide a reasonable transition to adjacent development. And so that kind of empowers the city to make a decision that's correct for all that's involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, what a map to follow. I'm John Trott III. I also reside at 2623 Lake Drive North and a resident of Lakeside Gardens. So if we can just pick up where Nicole left off, talking about this compatibility, I'll just throw another quote in there from the City Ordinance, Article 3. In order to be approved, an IPod project must be compatible with and preserve the character of adjacent residential neighborhoods. I apologize. So, the preferred development pattern shall be designed such that it would provide adequate buffering, graduation of uses, and a layout that considers and complements adjacent use in districts. We've mentioned some adjacent properties. We have a three-story, 38-foot townhome, so there's actually three buildings spanning the length of Dimick. Now, Doty was so kind to show a comparison of what that would have looked like to the marina projects, which actually had a setback of maybe 150 feet, whereas this setback is about 18 feet from the property line. So to show a comparison of, really, if you're looking at Dimick facing east, on your right, you have a one-story home, first one you see, and now this towering 38 feet from finished floor elevation. To show a little visualization of this, this is the scale.
He can't draw.
I apologize, very low-tech. So this is the scale. This would be the equivalent of, looking east, existing home, 15 feet finished floor height with 38 and a half feet above that. This isn't, this isn't a smooth transition. This is the furthest thing from a reasonable transition to adjacent developments. Yeah, the infill floor height here below. Now, in Article 3, it also states, a lesser building height may be required for compatibility with adjacent developments. And this is a perfect example of a demand for that. Compatibility, setback, as Nicole stated, if we're going to pick and choose our setback, if we're going to say, all right, we're going to go with a 1922 statute, even though we're rezoning, even though we're changing this development from an R1AA subdivision to a multi-use, and we're still going to piggyback off of the seven and a half foot, whatever it was, then we need to be consistent with that. You need to acknowledge that you are adjacent to a residential community, and you do, look at the additional heights that you are above 30 feet. Now, beyond that, if we're looking at this property, this is a gem. This is a strategic key to the city. As Nicole said, there's only so many waterfront properties where the gateway to the Gulf Street. What are we going to do? We're choosing to put a townhome development in there? This isn't just a piece of property that's in the middle of the city. This is a key piece that we can be strategic. So we've already discussed a marina. Nicole mentioned townhomes and residential's, luxury homes, multimillion-dollar homes. We have an opportunity to keep the same level of income tax, of property tax, the same level of profit for the developers, but to increase the value to all stakeholders. And all developments, like, we had a mention before, NIMBY, not in my backyard, that's not what this is. Three stakeholders have something to gain here. We have the developers, we have the surrounding neighbors, and we have the city as a whole. As it stands with this project, the developers, they'll get an A if this is a scorecard. The immediate neighbors, they'll get maybe a D. We won't say F. They're getting a D. And the city gets a C. But if we could do a project that really maximizes the value for everyone involved, such as marina, or such as high-end homes on a fingered canal, this is going to increase the growth for the city, potential jobs, because now we have business owners looking at high-end homes. The city will get an A. The neighbors will get an A, and the developers, still an A, let's say an A minus. But these are opportunities left on the table. We mentioned it to the developers, they admittedly really hadn't thought of the idea and realized the strengths to it. They had some hesitations, mostly because they're pretty dug into an existing idea. But the important thing to consider is, it just wasn't thought of. What else is left on the table here that already utilized the existing zoning? So we don't have to go ahead and change the zoning for some other, some other less beneficial projects. With that, I leave it to you. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Mike Morochek, 2624 Lake Drive North. The developer made note in their presentation of Hall's land that was, actually was part of Government Lot 2 that was platted in 1922. That was good history lesson. That was developed by Purdy and Hall, and that became Lakeside Gardens, 1922. That was just a few years before Boynton Beach became an incorporated municipality. Sort of takes precedence. So our property, or what we bought into, was there long before Boynton Beach was. Now, a fellow named Mr. Dimick came along, and he developed that area along with the He built himself a little cottage down there on those parcels of land that are in contention right now. contention right now, that you're considering changing from R1AA to high-density. So he thought it was kind of a nice place to live, and so do we. That's what we bought into. We bought into Lakeside Gardens, 1922. Now, we don't expect what we bought into to be taken away from us. This is something we have a right to, we paid for. It's our, it's our, it's our, it's our yielding of our labors, which is part of the Bill of Rights, if you go back that far. And I understand that a lot of this conversation that you gentlemen have been listening to all evening gets a little bit old and boring and tiresome. And I don't blame you, but right now, we have maybe 40 residents here, maybe not, somewhere's around that, that are asking their representatives that they elected to represent them. Actually, you all don't have to be here because they are here. And they're saying, "No, you've received affidavits showing their vote on this issue. We don't want high-density in Lakeside Gardens." Lakeside Gardens was set aside in perpetuity back in 1922, before the city was incorporated. We'd just like to leave it the way it is. It's single-family, low-density, quiet, little neighborhood. Now, I understand that we have to have progress, but we have to have progress with some good sense, which in nowadays is a rarity. I've been around long enough to understand what's taking place, and I came up in the old school, maybe a little bit before the rest of you, maybe not. So in any event, what we're looking for is, we're looking for our representatives to echo our vote. You've all received the affidavits. We will submit another copy for the record, and we'd enjoy you joining us in taking care of our neighborhood. Thank you.
My name is Conrad Mary. I live at 640 Dimic Road, which puts me directly into this development. And my biggest problem with this whole thing is the three-story buildings that are going to be right across the street from me. I've been there for over 18 years nearly. That used to be a nursery. I know it's going to have to change, but all up and down Federal Highway, there's two-story condominiums everywhere. This development should not affect our neighborhood. It does, they're asking to rezone land, get rid of roads. That's more effect than we should have to bear. You know, we've been there a long time, some of us, and there's a lot of change for us to have to put up with. Thank you very much.
My name is Ramona Morotek. I live at 2624 Lake Drive North in Boynton Beach. Our neighborhood is safe, clean, with no debris thrown all over, pleasant to live in, and maintains our privacy, limited traffic, and security. We do not need this project to be a part of our Lakeside Gardens. They need to secure this project from our homes. The planner of the Planning and Zoning Department, per statements by the planner of the builder, recommended inviting Casa Del Mar Development into our single-family, quiet neighborhood by advocating that they have sidewalks which are moot, gates and a wall. To exit your precious home is like being in a prison, swales which are ridiculous, and no water will drain and will hold mosquitoes. However, on 1/28/15, at a meeting with Hovnanian, they advised us they were working with Planning and Zoning Department, and they have made changes. There will be no gates or parking on Dimic, and there are other improvements being put in place. Also, we were advised the residents would not be using any emergency exits. If either of you on the commission owned our homes, you would agree with the above. You would be extremely upset if your quiet, peace, tranquility, safety, and security were breached by traffic and people you do not know all hours of the day and night. We, the citizens of Boynton Beach, voted you, our commissioners, and our representatives. We need your voice. We want you to speak for us to maintain our property values, safety, lifestyle, and 100% of what we have now. Please vote no as our representatives to this present plan and request further revisions of plans by Hovnanian for Casa Del Mar. Mayor and Commissioners, you all were provided a packet of the Lakeside Residence 40 affidavits which were executed and notarized, and I'm going to produce one for the record in minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry, you already spoke, so we're going to give you one chance. Thank you. Anyone else seeing none? We'll let the, wait, let's let them respond. Did the applicant want to respond to any of the concerns that were brought forward?
Mayor, members of the Commission. My name is Marty Perry, and yes, we do want to respond, and we're actually going to respond in three parts. I think that Ms. Glass is going to need to make a few comments relative to some of the remarks that were made. One point that comes to mind is the husband and wife that were up here that showed a perspective of elevations of heights, and I think, I think Ms. Glass needs to address that and a couple of other items.
Marty, can you, can you please speak a little?
We also have Derek Fennick here with us tonight, who is the Division President for K. Hovnanian, and I think he needs to address a couple of comments, not the least of which were the gentleman who was complaining about access to the site and complaints relative to Gateway Marina. To be honest with you, I don't know an answer to that, but I think that Mr. Fennick can address that. And secondly, I think he needs to comment on the, on the sales activity of the Peninsula Development to the north of us. Just, just to take a few minutes myself here, I mean, I've listened to the comments, and this is my first experience. I wasn't here for the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, and I, you know, you've heard a great deal of emotional comments from the neighborhood, but I think, I don't need to tell you, you live here. I mean, that area of Boynton Beach, basically, and I, and I have an aerial here, which is unfortunately not of the size that, I'll find what I'm looking for. But the Lakeside Gardens is an old subdivision. It was pointed out by the gentleman, Mike, who spoke, dates back to 1922. These are 25-foot lots, which were, at that point in time, and you see them all over Lake Worth and some of the older communities, small lots like that. And what we're talking about here is incorporating six of those small lots that are adjacent to the Dvorznys in order to square off this site. And I think that's an important issue, but, but the reality is, when you start talking about this older subdivision, it is surrounded on all three sides, leaving out the water side, by either commercial development or larger residential development, more intense development. That's the case to the south, it's the case to the north. The comment was made about Peninsula. Peninsula is 20 units per acre. That's our immediate neighbor to the north. We're at, we're at a less density than Peninsula is. The reality is, you look across the street, you have higher density across the street on US-1. The same is true going south. This is a pocket, Lakeside Garden. I, you know, it's a nice little pocket. Nobody is going to say that it's not a nice little pocket. There have been some newer homes that have been built along the waterfront in there that are nicer homes, so you have, you have a fairly expensive development that the gentleman, Mike, and I apologize for not knowing his last name.
Morotek.
Morotek. He's right, right opposite the Dvorznys, so he's got a two-story home in there. But if you go in there, you'll notice, and this gets back to one of the points made by the lady who had all the photographs. The reality is, is because that's such an older subdivision, the grade level of that subdivision is significantly lower than what would be allowed today. Today, you couldn't build Lakeside Gardens the way it currently exists, and that's why those homes along the water are elevated so much higher. The Dvorznys' house, their floor level must be at an elevation of eight, whereas the houses on the street are somewhere probably in the neighborhood of five or somewhere in that As that, as that area either continues as a single-family area and homes, new homes are built in there, they're all going to be raising their elevation. That's why there's flooding in there. The flooding is because they're so low. Are we impacting that? We've proven through staff and through all the other requirements, we're not impacting the flooding. As a matter of fact, we're helping the issue of flooding. We were asked by the city if we would provide an outfall through there. We're agreeing to do that. But my point is, is that the city has, through its planning, through the CRA and through your comprehensive plan, has looked at this area and said that this is an area that is prime for redevelopment. Here's a developer that comes in, and he's not the first one. There was a prior development, I think it was 2008, that came in here, was talked about by the residents that came in. They had approval for 82 units on less land. That was more intense. They had five-story buildings, which were condominiums, as opposed to, we're talking some four-story buildings. We're not putting them next to Lakeside. The, the reality is, is that you have been encouraging this type of development, and here comes a developer who says, "Okay, City of Boynton Beach, this is what you've painted as a picture that you want, and we'll come in and we'll comply with that." And they've done that. They've complied in every respect. The comment was made that there's been no compromise in our side, and I suggest you that, that nothing could be worse than, that the reality is just the opposite of that. There have been numerous compromises. Ms. Glass went through that, and I'm going to ask her to repeat those one more time for you. But I, I think the point is, is that you've had a very strong emotional appeal here, and I understand that. They're looking to preserve a lifestyle, but the reality is, the lifestyle here has been changing for a lot of years, and the city has recognized that. They're encircled by development. Sooner or later, something's going to happen. The most ironic story here is that they'd rather have a marina. Well, that marina that they were, that they're talking about was an in-and-out storage marina. And anybody who's ever had anything to do with in-and-out storage knows, the equipment used for in-and-out storage is loud, it's noisy, it's large, okay? That marina was approved before Peninsula actually became a reality. Can you imagine what's going to happen? And I suspect that the height, the height, that was a variance that was given for height. That's gone now. That's no longer there. You try to come back here again today and wait till you hear from the people at Peninsula up there about having that in-and-out storage facility next to them. And secondly, we have someone here tonight who can testify. That marina, I mean, that's a ship, excuse me, a ship that sailed. You had an approval. Where did it go? If it was such a good concept, why wasn't it built? How did it go into bankruptcy? I mean, I, I just, it doesn't make any sense. And the marina doesn't fit. If you put the marina in there, you can destroy, the end result will be, you will destroy Lakeside Gardens. Because what will happen is you'll have more pressure, people to come in and buy empty lots in Lakeside Gardens and be asking you for commercial development in there. That's exactly what's going to happen. So I, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. I'm going to ask Doty to step up briefly, and then I'm going to ask Derek to finish, because I think you need to hear from the developer to have a comment on what, what they propose and what they're trying to do here. Thank you.
Sir, we'll decide what the proper procedure is. Everybody has, excuse me, I'm not done speaking. Everybody who wanted to speak has had an opportunity to speak. The applicant has the last word. Thank you, sir.
To clarify for the record, there have been multiple compromises, revisions to this plan to address concerns that were expressed. We talked about the redesign of a water line to provide a new eight-inch line into the community of Lakeside Gardens. We've talked about a committed outfall for Dimic, so that, one, when we looked at the design, we wanted to address it, but two, based on staff and the plans there, we looked at redesigning to provide a separate outfall that would belong to the City of Boynton Beach. We've agreed to bury the power lines. We agreed to eliminate the access on Dimic. We've agreed to basically redesign the way the buildings function at the north, at the south property line, at the north edge of the adjacent access easement and the residential home to push those units back. We transitioned, we've addressed height, we've addressed everything that has been asked of us in terms of additional landscaping. I want to point out for the record that the south property line is not a wall, it's a wall and fence detail of a total of six feet, which behind that has got hedging, trees, and mid-story growth, which I referenced. It was meant to be inviting. That was what we were trying to do. We've seen examples, in fact, Peninsula on the other side, we have a wall. That's all we have, adjacent to our property. For the, for the record, we talked about the transition and the location of the building of the marina. Those plans are part of the record, they're in this presentation. I have graphic copies that I can show in terms of the height and the location of those buildings and the height study. I can provide that. We also have a marina expert that can talk about the permitting realities of that area, noting how low the water is there, grass issues and mangrove issues that are already there, and things like the Manatee Protection Plan, which your own comp plan addresses as well. With that, I'll let Derek address the, the market issue that was raised.
Evening. Not morning yet. First, I wanted to thank everybody. I'm sorry, Derek Fennick, Division President, K. Hovnanian. Thank you, Marty. I wanted to thank everybody, not only for tonight, but also for your involvement through this process, and I'd also like to thank the Commission. I know you've heard a lot of conversations from both sides, you've been patient with us as well. And before I get going, the one gentleman from Gateway Marina. See me afterwards, we'll get that resolved for you.
Sir, address the question.
I'm sorry. In regards to our company, K. Hovnanian has been around since 1959. You know, we don't go into projects haphazardly, for lack of a better expression. We've actually been building in South Florida since the late 1960s. I personally have been with the companies for 15 years. In Boynton Beach, just up the road, we built Half Moon Bay, right on the intercoastal, probably, I think it was in the mid-'90s, and it was a successful project for us. We believe in this community. I don't want to sit here and debate whether or not a marina should go here, because right now, we're presenting a townhome community. We've been operating, our office has actually been in Boynton Beach since 2002. We were one of the big developers in Renaissance Commons. We've developed a large center for this city. We understand, we've understood for 15 years how Boynton Beach operates outside of other parts of South Florida. My point is, we wouldn't have purchased the property if we didn't think this would be successful. We didn't purchase the property if we didn't think this would be a good, a good project for not only the neighbors of the south, but also for Boynton Beach. A lot of people looked at Renaissance Commons back in the day as a risky community, and I think all can agree, it actually came out, you know, much better than expected, and it's a very vitalized part of Boynton Beach. My point in all this is, I understand there's a lot of comments going back and forth with values. You know, we have over 2,500 associates in our company. We have an entire team that does nothing but market research. We believe in what we're presenting here today, and we believe that this will be a good community for Boynton Beach, and we believe that our residents and those that reside here will be happy. We pride ourselves on developing and creating great communities. You know, it's funny when you have these, these presentations, and I always call them the bad words internally, people start throwing around words like "projects" and "units." You don't look at, you don't look at something like this as "project" and "units." These are going to be someone's homes. This is a community. We recognize that. You know, obviously, it's a business, and that, that plays into what we do, but also, you know, our name goes on this. K. Hovnanian is a six, is a nation's sixth-largest home builder. We're one of the few who actually, a relative of the founder, is still a Hovnanian. We might be public, but it's still, it's run like a family-run business. That's very important, and our CEO even looks at this project that way in every community that we build. So I, I just wanted to spend some time and talk about that, and I thank everybody for your time. But at the end of the day, like I said, we believe in this project. We think it's going to be great for the city. We know it's going to be great for the city. And, you know, I agree, this is a fantastic piece of property, one of the few gems on the intercoastal, and we will do the city proud by building this community for Boynton Beach. Thank you. Thank you.
Were we going to let, I don't think the developer was the last word, right?
That's correct, Mayor. That's how our procedure is, that everybody gets to speak. The applicant has the last word.
No.
No, sir. This is not a court proceeding, per se.
Was the owner, the gentleman in the back, or was he going to say something, you said?
Did you have any, was there another speaker?
Did you have another speaker there? You mentioned?
It's a gentleman that could comment on the marina, but I think, would just offer you, Doty's, in my testimony as a proffer, that's basically what he would comment on.
Okay, that's good.
I don't see any further reason.
We don't need it, thank you. Okay, I'm going to return to the commission then for comments or questions.
Right here.
So let's start with the, come down the line.
Thank you. I need to get staff, I'm just saying, because I need to discuss this parking issue. They said that from planning and zoning, you all was against this. I need to hear it.
Evening, for the record, Kathleen Zeitler, Senior Planner. Each unit is required to have two parking spaces. The double-car garage for each unit counts as their two parking spaces. Then on top of that, they are required to have guest parking, and they do exceed the number of guest parking spaces required.
So parking is okay?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of that from right now. Go ahead. I'll be back.
I'd like to say something to that woman who stood up. I concur with what you've gone through. In fact, coincidentally, I was going to bring it up this year on the budget, because I've been to your location several times. And it's not, it's not the issue of the new developer, it's the issue of the city. And I feel that the problem there is that the city has not invested money in bettering and improving and fixing. So I believe strongly, as I said before, regarding the new potential builders, it's not the issue. It's our fault, it's our issue, and I want to put it this year when we talk about budget, to see if we can get money allocated to help you.
Go ahead.
Can I have Ms. Zeitler? I'm sorry. I'm going to get her. Okay, I'm reading from the Planning and Development Board meeting minutes on October 28. And your quote here stated that the parking provided in the plan meets code. You just confirmed that. It will be stipulated that the garages will only be used for parking, only be used for parking. So no stores can go in those garages?
Staff is recommending as a condition of approval, that the garages are limited to only parking.
Okay, and the HOA would enforce that rule?
Yes.
Okay. In addition, parking in the street would be enforced by code enforcement.
Yes.
Now, these are private streets, correct?
I believe so, yes.
It's my understanding, because I'm an HOA president, that the code or police department cannot enforce parking regulations on private streets.
Well, it would be the HOA, then.
As an HOA president again, I can tell you, they're almost unenforceable. Okay? And also, you go on to say, it would not be possible to widen the streets as it would not allow for significant flow of traffic.
Well, the streets are private, and they are a certain width, and the buildings are built, would be built right up to the limits of the streets. And no, they would not be able to be widened, the interior streets.
Also go on to say pedestrians would not walk on sidewalk by the street.
All the pedestrian activity is interior. They did eliminate the pedestrian access along Demick. At the time that that was said, there was the pedestrian access along Demick from the units. That has changed.
Okay, I can just, from past experience, I can tell you, you're telling the resident, the owner of the property, you can only use your garage for parking. That's what you're saying?
That's the way it has to be, for them to be able to meet their parking requirements.
Just for parking, no storage in your garage?
Well, they're going to have to have minimal storage to be able to park their two vehicles, depending on the size.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Staff?
Staff?
I have a question on the proposed ordinance 14031. It says, under recommendation, I'm confused here, staff has determined that the subject right of way no longer serves a public purpose. Based on the above analysis, staff recommends approval of applications, request abandonment of this 135 portion of Lake Drive.
I was just told by the developer, I'd just like to add for the record, that the garages will contain some built-in storage.
Andrew Mack, Building Official, City Engineer.
My question is, why doesn't this 135-foot portion still have a public purpose?
The only public purpose at this point would be to service those adjacent, single-family lots that are there now. Since the developer now owns them, the abandonment of those would go to the, either adjacent property owners. So as a part of the abandonment, we would retain utility easements to service utilities there. But there's no public purpose as far as for future access to any lots that are serviced by that road.
But the zoning hasn't been changed on those lots yet, correct?
Correct. So it would be in conjunction with the rezoning. This would be done. It would all be some time, some things.
So until there's the zoning changed, there is a public purpose for that road?
Correct.
Okay. I got another question. As pointed out, on the marina project, there were such glowing recommendations from staff for that. What's changed that those no longer are applicable?
What was the question?
Well, Mr. Dvorsny, I'm not sure if I got his name right, maybe I probably butchered it, but he pointed out that all the, when he went back and looked at the marina development staff recommendations, and staff made a lot of good reasons why it should be a marina. What's changed that those reasons are no longer valid?
I'll let one of the planners answer that.
Mayor, if I may, for the record, I was just clarifying with legal, the rezoning and the site plan cannot be considered until the abandonment occurs. So, because I questioned if there was an ordering issue. The abandonment does have to happen first, before the other two items can happen.
Can I discuss it?
Mike Rump, Planning and Zoning Director, to answer that question. That's not the project before us any longer. I think it was best explained earlier that that project is behind us. The current application before us is this townhome project. We've reviewed it on its own merits. Despite the support of the other project, we have a different project before us, and we review that against the criteria for master plan approval and amendment, as well as the rezoning.
Well, I realize this is a different project. I'm saying, what has changed in Boynton Beach that makes those recommendations for the marina project no longer valid?
If the project came back before us instead of this project, a new developer, new applicant, they might remain the same.
Okay, so all that's changed is that the developer, the current owner, wants something different.
Correct. We cannot hold a piece of property, a private piece of property, to a given development approval.
But it's zoned, what about, we can hold it to a particular zoning, correct?
It is being held to that zoning. It's the same mixed-use zoning, essentially.
All right, I'm still confused. And it's, what's the zoning for the marina?
IPUD.
Oh, and this is still an IPUD?
Yeah, yes.
Same thing.
It has to do with business.
It allowed residential as well. It could have been residential and a marina.
Okay.
Go ahead. You want to say something?
Does that, well, let me just, does that answer, does that answer your question?
Well, I'm, so it's, this-
We're not negating, what we're doing now-
As an IPUD, it can either be commercial or it can be residential.
Not any commercial, no. You'd have to, if you looked at it, the IPUD was the infill redevelopment zoning regulation, or zoning district recommended for the coastal area for infill purposes. It was staff's strategy to allow the marina in that, so it was amended through code amendment to allow that in the area. Of course, there were conditions, and it had to meet master planning requirements. And it could have contained residential as well. So that was a strategy to allow a marina in that area, and not necessarily rezone it to a commercial zoning, which would have allowed a marina as well, which could have been potentially more detrimental. The bottom line is, it's an IPUD zoning district, and allows both.
This is a trend I noticed, I've noticed it before, but starting with that PUD mess at High Ridge and Minor, is that I'm really concerned about the flexibility of staff of, anytime anybody comes in here, they immediately change the rules to accommodate the current owner, and I just don't see any consistency in staff's recommendations.
That's a, can I say that?
Please, 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 this is not a sporting event. Mr. Rump, just, I got this out of the land development regulations and such, and I'm with Commissioner Fitzpatrick, that's on Commercial Industrial Land Supply underneath that heading. And I'll just read it, if you'll allow me. Although the requests do not propose to reclassify or rezone any commercial or industrial lands, the new residential master plan replaces a master plan for a commercial marina. Marina-oriented and water-dependent uses are the only commercial uses allowed in the special high-density residential category, and only in conjunction with the Palm Beach County Manatee Protection Plan. The proposed rezoning does therefore represent, represents a loss of project that could have, that could have been a significant asset for the city. Those are your work, that's written down on staff.
Nothing changes, and I should add that I think you presented what Ms. Matress was going to explain to you, as far as the comp plan addition. That doesn't change.
So a significant loss?
So be it. That's not the project before us tonight.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is very simple, and we're making it more complex. A piece of property is owned and can be used in different ways. It depends on the owner of the property, on what he is going to do. If he gets approval from the city, from zoning and density and whatever else is required, he doesn't have to follow exactly a plan from the past. You can't live in the past, you've got to think of the present and the future. So the plan that is being presented right now is the present and the potential future. To worry about the water and what happened 10 years ago is irrelevant today. If the plan meets the specs today and is good for the city, will bring in tax revenue for the city, then it's good. Yes, you've got to consider the residents. There's been compromises made. It's up to us, the commission, to feel that, are we helping the citizens? And we also have to have the self-respect of developers who want to come into this area, to have that respect, that we want the proper development of the 21st century. It's that simple.
Well, let me just say that, you know, really talking about, I've heard a lot of stuff tonight about marina, marina, marina. There is no marina project before us. It's gone. It came befut and it went away. And there's no developer trying to put a marina in there. So really, that's a moot point. And we're not, it's not going to happen. I'm sorry, it was, they thought about, they went broke. It didn't happen. One question I had, the developer bought the two single-family lots, right? Who did he buy them from? Who owned those two lots?
Uh, Bookenberger.
Was he a resident? No, okay.
My name is Merv McDonald. I was a former property owner. A lot of memories on this property have been before this commission on a number of occasions, including the promenade that I was part of, the development in your city, and we're doing some other stuff in the city right now. But going to this property, we, clarifying some of the points about-
No, I just want you to answer my question. You said, who was the man, did he live in Lakeside Gardens?
No, he did not. He lived in Denver, just outside of Denver, Colorado.
How'd he happen to own those two lots?
He came in here with a gentleman by the name of John Lake, and he partnered up, he was a money partner for John. And they envisioned, when I had bought the property from the zip family, they were trying to assemble all the residences, including on the water, immediately to the south. And did have a number of those properties under contract. We, on a number of occasions, talked about partnering up with Mr. Bookenberger and Mr. Lake, and with other members here. I have met with Tony Morrow on many occasions, and the two lakes.
Those two lots were considered part of Lakeview Gardens?
Yes, they were.
They were, okay, and he sold them?
And he ultimately sold them. He was looking to, you know, try and assemble and do a multifamily development with all of the properties, so.
Okay, well, I just want to know how they got them. Obviously, somebody there sold them, sold it off. Once you sold it off, it's no longer yours, it's the guy who bought it. He owns it.
I acted on behalf of Bob Bookenberger for the sale to Hov Navy.
Okay, thank you.
Can I speak about the marina?
No, I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry. Okay, one other thing, the little young lady that got up and spoke talked about, there's no place in Boynton where you can take dogs. Actually, we have four parks in Boynton that allow dogs, just so I want to make that clear, that point. The other thing I had was, you know, I understand, people lived there for some long time and stuff like that, and they talked about it was platted in 1922. That's 93 years ago, folks. You know, things change. You know, you're talking almost a decade, you're almost like 100 years, more than a decade.
Interesting.
So, yeah, things change, and the areas changed. And like I said, to the south of this, I drove, I've driven in there several times to look over the area. I was over there again today, somebody can vouch for that. And I can tell you, I know on the other end of the street, there's a four-story building, very, doesn't have near the setback that we're talking about over here on this side. I don't know when that went in.
The property's burning, the other two lots.
Yeah, I don't know when that went in, but the, and I understand, but, you know, where we are here as a city, what we're looking at, is we have a developer that owns a piece of land, and they've got Bronckman Development, and they meet all of our codes. There's nothing that we can say, we can deny this because you didn't meet this code, you didn't meet parking, you didn't meet setbacks, you didn't meet this, you didn't meet that. They've met everything. I've got nothing to say, you know, I can't say no, because I'm going to let them, but I've got nothing to say you can't do that, because the city needs to, as long as they meet and dot all the i's and cross the t's, we don't have grounds to stand out and say you can't do that. That's kind of where I'm at here on this. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is for staff. Mr. Rump, I need to make sure that we have emergency, for emergency vehicles, we have turning points in there.
Yes, Commissioner Mike Rump, Planning and Zoning Director, again. The project has been reviewed, as always, through the Development Application Review Team process. Adequate maneuverability, circulation, so forth, requirements for both emergency vehicles, emergency egress and ingress, as well as trash removal vehicles.
Thank you. Okay, this is for council. Council on C, they have, we have in our package 80 free simple townhomes. We're supposed to change that to 78, and we just let it stay at 80.
No, there'll have to be an amendment when we get to that item to change that number.
Okay.
I'm through.
Do you have another question?
No, I was just wondering if we can move forward.
Yeah, I'm going to, but I just need to ask the, I heard something that we need to, if we were going to rezone, we couldn't abandon a road before we rezoned, is that correct? So we'd have to take it in that order?
You, it appears on your agenda the way it must occur, which the abandonment must be approved first.
First, and then, oh, so right down the line like that.
That leads to the rezoning of the other two lots.
Okay.
And then you could move on to the remaining items.
Okay, Mr. Fitzpatrick, you have something?
Well, referring to a developer, he's not before us now as a developer, he's before us now as land speculator. They bought the property at a certain zoning designation, and they're making a gamble. And it bothers me that somehow, I think, staff has given developers a while now, that the belief that our zonings are written on tissue paper, and they just keep changing whatever comes up. Where's the plan? Where do we draw the line and say, this is where we want Boynton Beach to be? It's like, we're letting developers- It's like, we're letting developers drive our future, and I don't think it's worked all that well. They talk about Comparities Project. Well, Boynton needs a good ratio between residential and commercial and industrial, and we gave away Motorola. And this is, where's the ratio now? This is another example of potential commercial going away. When is that going to stop? I mean, we need more commercial, and this is not the way to do it. As far as Marina going away and never coming back, this piece of property is almost directly across from the inlet. So anybody who has a boat that wants to go out, they have a certain amount of hours they can be out in the ocean. So the closest Marina means you're spending less time motoring down the intercoastal and more time out on the open seas, and you're spending less fuel, so I don't see why it wouldn't work. And finally, about changing the zoning of two residential homes, why shouldn't they expect the city to back them up on a zoning that, why wouldn't they expect us to keep that zoning? I just don't understand why, anytime, there's no continuity, there's no guarantees. I'm not for it.
I don't understand. We said we gave Motorola away, they got up and left. We didn't give them away.
But we gave away the industrial, with somebody else could have come in. I mean, where's, sometimes you've got to sit and wait.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I think you had it right when you said the ship has sailed, and I think Mr. Perry confirmed that. The ship did sail back in 2010. 2010 was a different time than it is now. We brand our city as the gateway to the Gulf Stream, gateway to the Gulf Stream. I mean, that's our brand. We're quickly closing all portals to that gateway to the Gulf Stream. The Gulf Stream is not going to be accessible from Boynton Beach. I say to you that let's start thinking outside the box for here in Boynton Beach. Let's think Marina. We say it's impossible, why is it impossible? This is 2015, nothing's impossible. We haven't marketed that, and I understand, sir, you're a great builder, you have a great reputation, and I respect all you've done here in Boynton for us. And I know you're a home builder, not a marine, but you went into this project knowing that this was zoned for a Marina. I say that we need these portals toward the gateway to the Gulf Stream. I think we need these portals. That's our brand here. And if we close these them off to pacify 70, 80 homes, which probably half will be snowbirds and not even spend their time and money here in Boynton Beach, I think it's wrong. It amazes me that the residents here, the residents, are okay with a 57-story boat barn. That amazes me.
57 feet.
57 feet. It amazes me that that would be okay. But I think you foresee the commercial use. I think this falls under the CRA Comprehensive Plan. Think of the spin-off jobs that could be created by a Marina, a working Marina. Think about that. That could fill the federal corridor with jobs, good-paying jobs in District 2. I say that we take all this into consideration when we make our vote. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I don't know about the people out there, when they read, there's books called fiction and nonfiction. Nonfiction gives you the background, the knowledge to move forward. When you read fiction, you're in Never Neverland. When you talk about development, a man is investing, a company is investing his money and is willing to invest his money, and when he does it in a city, a county, a state, let alone a country, he's there to build something to better the neighborhood. We, the commission, have to decide if this presently, this structure, this establishment, is good for this city bringing in ratables. The concern, and very much so when I spoke to the neighbors, is that this was going to be a compromise. What I'm hearing now is a child who's given a piece of candy and wants two pieces, and then three pieces. There's a degree that we all have to compromise. And what I'm hearing now is childish talk. We have a major developer who wants to build here, has been willing to compromise, has compromised, and are we, the city, the commissioners, let alone citizens, foolish enough to let a deal like this go by, which the level of development is not low-end, it's not middle-class, it's higher-end? So we have to look in the mirror, and we have to say, what is truly good for the city? The fiction of Maple Leaf tomorrow, or what's the reality of today? And I think that's the question, and that's where you get your answer.
Okay, let's bring this to a head.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read one more thing here, under the Land Development Regulations, policy 1.12. The city shall not approve any increase in hotel motel in residential densities in the coastal high-hazard area that would increase evacuation times above the 16-hour level of service for out-of-county hurricane evacuations for a Category 5 storm. It's been noted by staff, the city has no in-house capability to estimate the impact of this development on evacuations times. We'd be breaking one of our own policies.
I don't see where that comes in. Okay, item A is Proposed Ordinance Number 14031, first reading, public hearing, approve abandonment of a portion of North Lake Drive, bounded on the south by Demick Road and Lot 1 of the hulls subdivision to the north. The subject right-of-way to be abandoned is 40 feet wide, extends a distance of 135 feet, containing 5,004 square feet. Appicant Dodi Buckmeyer Glass, Gentile Glass, Holloway, O'Malley and Associates, agent for the property, owner Kay Hovonian, TC Homes of Florida. Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
So moved.
He made a motion to deny.
Second.
Mayor, please request a motion in the positive as opposed to the negative. It's easier to keep track of what the rights of rehearing are.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second motion.
You got it.
Sir, second?
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call?
Yeah.
Mr. Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casella?
No.
Motion fails 3-2.
Fails 3-2.
Do we need to do the others?
You should do B.
B. Closed Ordinance 14032, approve Casa Del Mar feature land use map amendment from low-density residential to special high-density residential. Appicant Dodi Buckmaster Glass, Gentile Glass, Holloway, O'Malley Associates. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Casella?
No.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Motion fails 3-2.
3-2. Does that eliminate the others?
Jim? The remaining items on the agenda are conditioned on the approval of the abandonment and the zoning, excuse me, the land use change on the two lots which did not pass.
So the other three are dead, right?
They are.
Okay, that does it.
Does it.
Okay, that sells it. You've got your wish.
Point of information, point of information. This was first reading. Even though they failed, did they come back for a second reading?
No, sir, it does not.
No, it's finished.
No.
Hey, item F.
Lawsuit.
Approve amendments to the land. If you could please leave quietly, thank you, so we can continue the business. First reading of Ordinance 15002.
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida approving amendments to the Land Development Regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, entitled Definitions, Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D, Use Matrix Notes, Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D, Table 3-28, Use Matrix, Providing for Conflict Severability and an Effective Date.
This is Ordinance 15002 on first reading, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Casella?
Yes.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yea.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
Okay. Proposed Ordinance 15001 on second reading, City Attorney?
Ordinance, I'm sorry, Mike, did you want to say something? Mayor, the previous ordinance was advertised as a public hearing, you should open it for comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. On first reading? Yeah.
Just because of the nature, it was advertised.
Okay, does anybody wish to address Ordinance 15002 on Land Development Regulations, Amendments, and the definition zoning use matrix and corresponding use matrix notes to establish a new use titled medical care or testing inpatient to allow medical uses that provide 24-hour service or treatment? Any public wish to address that ordinance? Seeing none? We have closed the public hearing.
Mayor, the ordinance did pass on first reading.
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 15001, this is second reading. An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, meaning the Code of Ordinance is Chapter 10 Garbage Trash Offensive Conditions, Article 3, Abandoned Property by revising Section 10-51.5i4, entitled Registration of Abandoned Real Property, to allow revisions in the annual registration fee, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
This is Ordinance 15001 on second reading, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion's second. Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance, second reading? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casella?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Proposed Resolution 15017. City Attorney want to read the title?
Mayor, we don't need to read the title of the resolution, you'll just summarize the issue. It's authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Community Champions Corporation.
So moved.
Is there, I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's second, 15017. Any discussion? Anybody in the public want to address this ordinance? Resolution, it's a resolution. No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Show the most unanimous. Consider options for future administration and maintenance of the Quantum Park overlay dependent district, including the following. One, continue current operations whereby future administrative action and vision of the district are overseen by the existing board of supervisors and their elected successors. Second option is to remove and reappoint the board of supervisors, thus injecting new leadership and vision. Third option, dissolve the Quantum Park overlay dependent district and assume all depth and common ground maintenance. There's probably people here who want to address this issue.
Mayor, this was initiated by one of the property owners as a recommendation and request to the city, of course, to the city commission, because the city commission has the right to make policy on this particular issue.
May I ask a question, please, Mr. Attorney?
Go ahead.
I've been sitting down with different people and trying to get a true understanding of what I think is right or wrong. I would like, personally, I would like more time to learn both sides of the story. For me to vote on something or consider something like this at this time, I feel personally that I need more knowledge. I think the history is one thing, the politics is something else, but I'd like personally to be able to sit down with both sides and hear both sides of the story personally. So I'd like to table this.
Do we have either side here to give you their side?
We got sides here.
Mayor, there's no action necessary on this item tonight.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's not that kind of timing issue, but I would suggest this was the intent of putting it on the agenda, that the commission be educated on this issue bit by bit if necessary. At least the side that made the request for this action be permitted to make a presentation. Then you may wish to table it, so that there doesn't have to be a spontaneous response to it, and at the next meeting, entertain other points of view on it.
Thank you.
Is there a person here that initiated this want to speak?
Or you might get educated.
Peter Sacks, Sacks Sachs Capital Law Firm, 6111 Broken Sound Parkway, representing Olin Properties, the largest property owner in Quantum. We would like to thank the city attorney and city manager for putting this issue on the agenda. We've been speaking to staff and officials for some time about the problems in Quantum. If you see the agenda materials attached, Commissioner Merkel, is a letter that my partner, Andre Park, wrote to the city manager on December 18th, which describes the problems we're having in Quantum. As you know, this is very important to our client. They've had difficulties with previously approved development and with development that is not proceeding because of the overlay district, which is a dependent district of the city. But also, this matter is important as a matter of public policy because the overlay district is not a private entity, it's not a developer, it's a governmental entity that you created under Ordinance 0561. For private property owners to develop property in Quantum Park, they have three layers of government to go through currently. The city, where we don't have any difficulties, the South Florida Water Management District, where we don't have any difficulties, and the overlay district, which has hamstrung us. They've hamstrung us. If one of the governmental bodies refuses to review and process governmental permits or delegates this authority to a private entity, this grinds the development process to a halt. We're going to submit the minutes of the overlay district dated November 6, 2012, into the record, which you can review. These minutes confirm that the district board enacted a policy whereby the district will not review governmental drainage permits unless the property owner first receives the approval of the privately-held Property Owners Association. And the Property Owners Association is not an arm of the city. So they've delegated a function the city gave them to someone that is not representing the city. These minutes confirm that they will not review these permits unless you go through the POA. This is illegal. It's a delegation of governmental authority to a private entity. The overlay district is essentially telling private property owners that they will not receive required governmental drainage permits unless they satisfy the demands of a private entity. The district is also stating that it will not fulfill its governmental requirement of simply receiving and processing drainage permits. Aside from being an illegal delegation, the manner in which the policy was approved also brings up ethical concerns. The individual overlay district board member that proposes policy is also a paid employee of the Private Property Owners Association. In addition, the district engineer, who is in charge of processing drainage permits, is also the Private Property Owners Association engineer. This matter is even more egregious since property owners like Olin pay thousands of dollars in assessments to maintain the water bodies that the district will not allow them to drain into. Olin is impacted by this significantly and by the intertwining relationship between the overlay district, which is the city's, and the Property Owners Association, because Olin is one of the last property owners attempting to develop the undeveloped portion of Quantum Park. The development of the property is what triggers the overlay district's regulatory authority. Now, there's no secret that there's a contentious relationship between our client, Olin, and the Property Owners Association. However, the city also is negatively impacted by what is happening here. Olin has paid $750,000 in impact fees to the city, and if they're able to complete their projects without... their projects without illegal interference, the city would net another approximately $800,000 in impact fees. Olin, between what it's built and what it proposes to build, has 1,786 units in the city, not to mention 20,000 square feet of beautiful commercial space. They may be your largest developer. The district's policies that prevent the completion of the development and prevent the city from maintaining increased tax base and additional impact fees just shouldn't be allowed to continue. It's in no one's best interest, not the city's, not the property owners, not anyone's. We're asking the city commission to hold their dependent overlay district accountable and either dissolve the board and take over, or simply replace the board with professional people who will do an objective job. It could be staff people, it could be property owners in Quantum, it could be residents, anyone you have confidence in. One of the commissioners is, should I finish, or?
Go ahead and finish, he can ask later, he won't forget.
We're, we're looking for a professional, objective board that will treat everyone fairly and openly and be held accountable. And you have the right to do that. In fact, you have a duty to do that. When the city enacted ordinance 561, it did so to provide the best alternative for delivering community services. The city also wants to have a representative board. The current board doesn't own property in Quantum, doesn't live in Quantum, and really has no remaining connections with Quantum. Neither owner of the city were notified of so-called elections held by the overlay district despite the fact that the city and Olin are the largest property owners in Quantum Park. We're asking the city to utilize its authority and hold the district accountable, simply that. I would like to close by putting into record a handbook created by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity that specifies that municipalities may hold dependent special districts accountable by A, dissolving them, or B, removing the board members at your will. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Sacks, how many property owners are on this association?
Under the overlay district?
Right. Is the board made up of property owners, this association?
I didn't understand your question. It's my understanding there are no residents owning property in Quantum Park that are on the board.
Well, no one has any skin in the game that sits on this board that makes the decisions for Quantum Park, correct?
That's our understanding.
That's your understanding? Thank you.
A question regarding the elections. You answered part of it. As far as the elections go, you said, number one, no one's on the board who owns property. Number two, when was the last election? Was there, I'll use the word candidate, was there a chance to have candidates on the board representing themselves? In other words?
The answer is, and you can check with, with the city staff as well.
And it should be in their minutes.
Olin was not notified of any election.
Okay.
So we don't know.
Was it in their, is it in their minutes? Because it should be in the minutes when you have an election, that election was taken, and who were the candidates, who won, and what the votes were?
Let my partner answer that, Andre Park.
Thank you for a record, Andre Park. I want to answer that with twofold. First of all, as Mr. Sacks indicated, we don't know when the last election was, was made. We can, we can see where, when it was indicated from the public records, and we have to, in order to get information about this district, we have to actually request, public records request, because there's no, there's no information online that we can readily get to. It's not accessible. We can't look at any place online and see this is when it's going to, it's going to occur.
If the city is involved, should we not be receiving, I'll use the term again, minutes of what is going on? And if, if so, then we should be able to give it to you.
Sure, and the city should have received a notification as well because it's the property owner. But we stand in the same position as the city. We weren't notified, so we don't know.
Thank you. Was anybody from the other side present? Yeah.
Evening again. Marty Perry representing Quantum Park Dependent Overlay District, or Overlay Dependent District, I'm not sure, I never always get that screwed up. In any event, I've had the privilege of representing the district for about four years now, and most of which included some significant negotiations with Mr. Cheroff and initially with the former manager, and I think we finished up with Ms. Laverrier. And that was negotiations relative, that ended up dedicating all the streets, et cetera, to the, to the city and retaining certain aspects of the overlay district. And I'd just like to start by saying, first of all, the first notice that we had of this item being on the agenda, we received it somewhere around 5 o'clock last Wednesday evening. I've had exactly about 30 minutes to spend on this. And I, this is not criticizing anybody. I think that the notice went out by email from Mr. Cheroff's office at around 4:45 on Wednesday. The reality is, is that there are a number, with all due respect to Mr. Sacks and Mr. Parks, there are a number of inaccurate statements that are included in his letter and that have made, been made here today. Just, just to pick on a couple of them. Mr. Gurlicke, who is the district engineer, he mentioned was also the engineer for the Property Owners Association. That's not true. Secondly, that Olin is the only remaining developer. That's not true. The, that, that he's the largest property owner, that's not true. I mean, I think there are a number of facts, and I, the question is, how much detail do you want to go into tonight? I'm just going to read you a statement of certain things that, that I think are interesting. First of all, we are prepared, and I, and I think we deserve an opportunity to do this. We wanted an opportunity to make a presentation tonight. We were advised that because of such short notice and, and city policy that we weren't able to do that. And I'd like to have an opportunity to come back here so that we can make a complete presentation.
Yeah, well, what we're trying to do here tonight, just get a little input from both sides, because like was said, we want to look at this and get a lot more information. So we won't be making any decisions tonight, we just want to get a little input.
Right, and, and I think that's, that's appropriate, because you've got a lot of information that's been given to you. I think, my understanding and based on Mr., Mr. Parks' letter, he states that he's met with each of you, he's met with city staff. You know, I, I think we need an opportunity to respond to their letter, and I think we need to be able to do that in detail, because the reality is, this district, which was created by the city pursuant to statute, okay, has performed significant functions. The second reality is, is that the Olin Company that's referenced here, first of all, one of the original board members of the district was Mr. Olenikoff, who is the principal of Olin Companies. He never took office. He was one of the people that you appointed to be on this board, and he's here complaining tonight because he's not being treated fairly. And the reality is, is as they have acknowledged, Mr., Mr., the Olin Companies, there's a fairly litigious company. He submitted a resignation without ever having sat at a meeting, okay, because of the, of the impact that there was going to be litigation forthcoming. You know, so there's some things that you need to understand. Secondly, this district board, which is, which is currently in place, just had an election that was on November 4th. It was properly noticed, just like any other election, just like election for the city commission. It was properly noticed the way they're required to by law. Olin Properties is entitled to 55 votes. They didn't vote anything. There were 66 votes cast out of a total of 300 and some. 100 and some of those are actually owned by the district, because the district owns over 100 acres here. But Mr. Olin made no effort through either his company or otherwise to vote his, to vote his shares, you know, but yet he's here complaining. And I, it's things like that you need to know about. And I would invite you, the, the district board meets on a regular basis, and when you talk about professionals, this board is run by, their, their manager is a former county attorney for Palm Beach County, okay? Their engineer is a well-recognized local engineer who's dealt on a regular basis with your, with your city staff. They, they have numerous other, the, the company that manages them is a company that was started by a gentleman who ran one of the largest drainage districts in the county, Northern Palm Beach County Water Control District. They have excellent staff here, you know, and they're being asked to be replaced when they've done an outstanding job over the years. So I think you need to know all the facts, and I would invite you to, in the interim, if you have an opportunity, attend their meeting. They have a meeting coming up shortly. See how they run their meetings and see, see what kind of action they take. The reality is, the problem they're having with Mr. Olin is this district is charged with protecting the environment over there and those waterways. And I can show you photographs, and we'll do that at the next presentation opportunity we get. The Mr. Olin has intentionally violated that, okay, and has created problems for the environment over there. He's encroached on district lands. So I could go on and on, but I'd like to end it with that and request that, you know, we have another opportunity for a full presentation.
City Attorney? Could we, it seems there's a lot of information to come, and both sides need to be able to, could we table this and set up another time?
That was the intent of getting it started, let all the parties tell the commission in a public setting what their point of view is, but we knew that could not be accomplished in one night, so it would be appropriate to table.
Motion to table.
Most second, all in favor?
Aye. Mr. Perry, can I get a notice when the meeting is?
We'll send a notice to the city manager who can inform all of them.
I'd like a notice that I, so I.
Perry, that's my, that's my district. I'd like, I'd like to also be notified of that meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And I got a question, the city manager, Madam Manager, were we notified of that election? Did you have knowledge of that election?
I'm confusing on the, but no, I don't think we did.
As we're stockholders.
And is, there minutes of that election?
Yes.
And were we notified?
Yes. If I can answer that question.
Real quick, yes.
My name is Richard Ellington, I'm the district manager, and I work for a company called Special District Services, which has the contract to manage it. Under, under the ordinance, which is formed under state law, we are required to give a public notice in a newspaper of general circulation twice a month, twice, two times prior to the holding of the, of the election. The election by law is required to be held on the, on the same general election day in the even years of, of each year. So that notice was published in the Palm Beach Post. It was a newspaper of general circulation as required by law. All the property owners got the same notice. There was no individual notice given to any other property owners. The same property owners were all noticed by this method. As Mr. Perry noted, there were 63 property owners represented in person or by proxy, and Mr. Olin's 55 acres were not represented at the, at the election held November the 4th at 2:00 PM, and there are minutes to that, to that meeting, sir.
So notice by newspaper?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. Item D pursuant to section 286.011, Florida statutes request is made for a private attorney-client session of the city commission to discuss pending litigation in the following case, the Senzo Guerrero plaintiff versus Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office, Florida Department of Financial Services, Division of Insurance Fraud, State of Florida, Division Incorporated, City of Boynton Beach, et al., defendants, United States District Court, Southern District, Florida case number 14CV80815, Cohen Seltzer. City Attorney?
Mayor, we'll need no more than a half an hour of your time before, during, or after one of your upcoming commission meetings.
Next commission meeting, all right?
That's fine.
Next commission meeting is all right.
Say 5:45?
5:45 should be more than enough time.
5:45 before the next commission meeting.
That's the next, okay.
Before next meeting, yeah.
Okay.
17th.
Thank you.
That's all you need there?
That's all.
All right, we stay adjourned. Hit it.[1776.78]